Committee meeting to order, today is October 25th, 2020. We are starting the meeting tonight at 7:14 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's emergency order modifying the state's open meeting law issued March 12th, 2020, the August 25th, 2020 meeting of the PBD school committee will be held in the library at the Higgins Middle School for school committee members, our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, and central office administration as requested by the superintendent. In accordance with the governor's order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. The regular meeting of the PBD school committee will not allow in-person attendance to members of the public, but every effort will be made for the public to adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. Alternative public access to this meeting will be provided in the following manner. We will be televised live on PBD Access TV. We have real-time public participation can be addressed to the PBD school committee utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. The application will allow users to view the meeting and make a comment during public participation. And again, please those that are interested in being heard during public participation, please make sure your hand is raised within the, at our website. Okay, I'd like to start the meeting, call to order, if we could please rise for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Terrific, and we also have at our meeting today, we have our PBD High School principal, Steve Magno, and our assistant PBD High School principal, Jared Haas, as well as our PAT and our city technology team, our school technology team, which play an invaluable service for us certainly all the time, but in particular these last few months. First, approval of minutes, I'd like to open up for approval of minutes of our August 18th, 2020 regular school committee meeting. I'll open that up.
I move to approve the minutes of August 18th, 2020. Second.
Great, further motion for approval of the August 18th, 2020 minutes by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympia. On the, on the motion, on the minutes, Mrs. Dunn?
I'll be voting in favor of them, but I will say I wish that the word PBD crud had made it into our minutes for all eternity, so that a hundred years from now, people would wonder what that was.
You hear that, Leanna?
It's a real thing, Leanna.
No, no, thank you.
Eight-six, twelve lines from the bottom.
Through the chair, Ms. Dunn, did you want to reiterate what that really meant?
We never know.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, and then we'll, oops, I'm sorry, go ahead, Leanna.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and I did want to mention the minutes are being kept by our PBD school committee recording secretary, Leanna Harris. Okay, approval of bills, I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Coppender, we have a few warrants today.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 4563 in the amount of $27,098.58, which is dated June 30th, 2020, subject to audit.
Second.
You've heard the motion by Mrs. Coppender for approval of warrant 4563, that motion has been seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 4564 in the amount of $352, dated June 30th, 2020, subject to audit.
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Coppender for approval of warrant 4564, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 4565 in the amount of $26,836.42, dated August 25th, 2020, subject to audit.
Second.
Great, thank you, you've heard the motion by Mrs. Coppender for approval of warrant 4565, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 4566 in the amount of $115,837.94, dated August 25th, 2020, subject to audit.
Second.
You've heard the motion for approval of warrant 4566, motion made by Mrs. Coppender, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, that is all.
Thank you, Mrs. Coppender. Continued business, couple of items, Mrs. Dunn, I'd like to, well actually, I'll open it up to our superintendent, Dr. Vidalah, and our business manager, Joe Scanlon, if there's any FY20 budget updates to be made at this time.
Just about our day talking, my team, we're trying to email with my team's director of finance today, he said stay out of the FY20 budget, he's closing it, no more current entry, whatever you need to do, just wait till he's done, so hopefully five people and he'll give us something to finish the work.
Okay, thank you. On the, on the item, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, it's kind of tangentially related to the item, it's actually fiscal year 21 budget. I know everybody's working, been working extremely hard and putting in a lot of long hours. If possible, could we, could we get a budget committee, a budget meeting, maybe within the next two weeks, if that's possible?
Yep, no problem. Okay, great, next item, the Welch School MSBA project update, Mrs. Dunn, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, this week, what we're working on is scheduling the MSBA kickoff meeting. This is something MSBA does with every school project. We will have a meeting with the OPM, with our designer, and with the mayor and several, mayor and Dr. Vidalah and several other members of the city structure. And at that meeting, the MSBA will review the details of the contract, and then we will move forward with all of the work that's being done with the Welch. So it's, it's a milestone, having that kickoff meeting, and right now it's just in the scheduling plans.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you.
There's no objection, I'd like to make sure that we go to our superintendent's report before public participation. I think that is appropriate, I think we've all agreed to that going into the meeting today, that that makes sense considering where we are. So I'd like to turn it over to you, Dr. Vidalah, for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So today's a big day, and I really get excited on opening day. So today was the first day we welcomed back teachers, and it was a little different this year, but it was, it was really a great thing. So I have to thank our technology team and thank PBD Access Television. We did a hybrid model of our opening day presentation, so I was able to present live at PBD High School for our faculty. Some people were able to attend socially distanced in the auditorium, and the rest of the people were able to join via YouTube and participate via chat, and we had an interactive piece. Many of the faculty joined together, distanced in their cafeterias and watched it as a large group, and were able to participate in the, in the meeting. I will, I will share the link to the YouTube, it's about a 45-minute presentation, Mayor Betancourt was able to speak, and Mary Henry was able to speak. And I think during one of the September meetings, we'll talk about my entry plan as a superintendent and, you know, the goals for the district, but I did want to just present a little bit about, about what we talked about today, because I felt as though, once the teachers come back, it is inspiring to me, it is inspiring to each other, and my, my goal is to really honor the work that was done with our strategic plan over the course of, of the past year, and then also to really try to align it with my core values and the core values that I know of the committee and, and the district, and really try to find a way to bring that all together. And the, the goal that I have, and the word that keeps coming out is the word hope, is that I want to bring hope to this district, I want to bring hope to the community, and thinking of our mantra of every student, every day, we came up with this visual of hope. And hope would be high expectations, optimism, personalized learning, and equity in access for every student, every day. And then at the bottom, you'll see the objectives that, that were designed from our strategic plan, and we grouped them into two areas, two big themes for the district of building a community and providing equity and access. And so as I start to talk about my goals for the district and what the district goals are and the vision, this is really a visual that, that some of our team has put together that really captures where we want to go. And, and we'll talk a little bit more about it next week, but we talked about it with the, with the teachers today, and then the principals were able to use this as a jump off point and talk to their teachers about their school improvement plans, and everything will be in line. And, you know, what's really exciting, where the things are coming together in terms of reopening, our, our elementary schools and middle schools are working on their hybrid model and focusing on the PD that we need to provide on remote learning, and we also have our high school administration here today, because there were a lot of questions last week about what the high school looks like. So at this time, I'd like to call up Principal Steve Magno and Assistant Principal Jared Haas, they have a small presentation for us, and then we can open it up to some questions, if that's all right with the committee.
Sounds good, thank you, Dr. Vidalah. Yeah, please come forward to get the table. Welcome, gentlemen, and please jump right in when you're ready.
Thank you, and thank you, members of the school committee, for allowing us to have the opportunity to present our plan for recovery and reentry for PBD High School tonight. I think it's important that we have this conversation, that we go for a clear and honest dialogue, and keep the community at home informed of the plans for PBD High School, knowing that we are returning to school under some very strict guidelines. I do want to acknowledge that the team effort that has gone into this summer planning for a return to school, whether it was remote or hybrid, we, we started the reopening team that met, you know, weekly with stakeholders, of parents, community members, teachers, and administrators. We also had a scheduling team made up of members of the PFT that I met with on developing a number of different schedules to look at as to what a return to school could look like. Next slide, Dr. Vidalah? So, change is a process, you know, many times we start to look at, we have to influence change, we hear, we've always done it this way, this is not how we used to do it, and in the past, we did it like this. We are in a, in a very, you know, different time of education in school, and change is both adaptive and technical. I do want to bring everybody back to the picture of graduation, where we were given three weeks' notice to plan and implement a graduation. It was different, we reimagined what graduation looked like, we bent the rules, we fought creatively, and we reimagined it, and it was a success. We took that same approach when reimagining what a high school reentry could look like that was fair and equitable for all students, and maintained a level of academic rigor. So going back to the super's message about hope, having high expectations, personalized learning, optimism, and equity in access, we started to look at, you know, what, where are our constraints, what were our challenges in trying to bring PBD High School back to in-person schooling? So looked at our schedule, this is what we currently have, this is what we've always done. We have a 7:45 minute course schedule. In that schedule, we looked at a number of transitions, safety protocols that had to be in place, movement throughout the building, mask breaks, and lunch. We calculated with a seven-period schedule as-is, trying to implement safe transitions, we would have nine, at least nine transitions, equating conservatively about 90 minutes to two hours of transition time. That's not including mask, mask breaks and lunch. So there were some concerns about how we took the current schedule and fit it into this new model. PBD High School has approximately 1,500 students, I think, last check, we're at 1,499. In the current schedule, we have 374 course offerings, there are 874 sections of classes in those course offerings. We offer in the comprehensive high school, commu-, CTE courses or current technical education, we have English language learners, we have special education students, we have advanced placement, honors, CP1, CP2, and all, a whole bunch of electives. We have both year-long courses and semester courses. We also wanted to make sure that we honored student choice in their schedule and requests, we felt that that was important to keep that, where we weren't just taking away electives or not, you know, not honoring student requests. We also had the issue of how do we create cohorts effectively for in-person return to school? And we have, you know, and it doesn't even get into the, the concepts of building community, making school what it used to be, the feeling of socialization, what does that look like given the current guidelines, wearing masks, having breaks, and not being able to be more than six feet apart from our friends and peers, and then the whole issue around social emotional learning.
So we wanted to take some time to look at what happened in spring, when we think of the remote emergency learning. And we had some surveys that we sent out to families, and we, we talked to students, we talked to families, we talked to community members, and we got back a lot of data. And one of the big things that we noticed was, students and teachers were overwhelmed, so that as we were thinking about this plan, we needed to take these things into account, these pieces of data. Parents complained there was a lack of clarity on assessments, right? Some assessments didn't have due dates, and this was something that students had always become comfortable with, of knowing when assignments were due. We also implemented a pass fail rate system, which was a, a system implemented by most high schools across the state, which also didn't work, because a lot of students wanted to have a grade on the assignment, and there was lack of incentive if it was pass fail. So what we're learning from this is, these things can't continue. One of the big takeaways is, we're implementing back to a normal grading system. We're also thinking in our schedule that Mr. Magno's going to present, about how do we make it so that teachers and students are less overwhelmed? There was a concern that teachers didn't teach and that students didn't learn. We, we heard from this school committee that there was a concern that we wanted to have teachers in front of students. So as we're thinking about the schedule, as Mr. Magno's going to talk about, keep that in mind, that we really tried to emphasize that every student would see a teacher every day. Too many assignments were optional, no longer are assignments going to be optional, right? This is really important for parents to understand, that the, the high school is returning to business as usual in terms of assignments. Assignments are due, due dates are kept, teachers are grading, this is all going to be part of this new hybrid system. Too many platforms and tools, we're working with our IT department, with our Director of Teaching and Learning, we're working with the district, have come up with what is the best way to deliver content. We're going to be working on that PD over the next 10 days, attendance is going to be taken, so students are not going to be able to give the excuse, I can't come to school. And we're going to be focusing on social emotional concern, so that, not, not as the sole focus of school, but as an additional focus, that we're going to be trying to meet the needs of students when we can, to give them educational and social emotional support. So again, these are our lessons learned. We need to increase our connections between teachers and students, right? We need to have a system in place in our new system to help students to ease back into school and to make connections with teachers. We need to narrow the focus, we need to make every day more focused on a few things rather than a lot of things. We need to remove systemic barriers and provide rigorous work with high expectations that goes right in line with Dr. Vidalah's plan. High expectations for all students, that every student is capable of achieving at high levels. We need to implement grading practices for equity and growth. These are all things that we're going to be focusing on over the next 10 days and throughout the year, that every student is, can be successful. We want to develop a primary person model for student support, where a teacher connects with a group of students and makes that a priority to connect both socially and help them with academics as needed. And then we want to embed that into the schedule, so it's not just a once-in-a-while thing. And we then also want to limit screen time and provide some structure, so that it's predictable for parents, for students, that we know what every day is going to look like ahead of time, and that it's not always staring at the screen, there's going to be offline work, and there's going to be online work as well. So taking into account all of these different things, the scheduling team came up with this new proposed hybrid schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. So last week around, about 11 o'clock, a week ago, we were given the charge to reimagine school. What does a hybrid schedule look like that, that is equitable for everybody? So we, so we gathered our team, and we took a look at it, and I'm confident that whatever plan that we've put in place, our teachers are professionals, and whatever we do is going to be great. So taking the model of every student, every day, and this was a, taking into account all the lessons that were learned and the feedback from parents, we, we decided we had a cohort of students, the only way we could cohort students was to divide them into half. So cohort A is approximately 712 students, last names beginning A through K. They will receive instruction, in-person instruction on Monday and Thursday. There'll be synchronous remote learning Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, we have a couple of schedules that we'll show you that will illustrate this for the school committee and for those watching at home. Cohort B is last names beginning L to Z, L to Z, 787 students, so it's a close breakdown, that's our entire population of students. Cohort C represents our special populations. These are our high needs populations, special education students, ELLs, certain ELL students, that, out of that total population's about 150 students, give or take. We got to create a cohort D. Cohort D represents our students who have opted into the remote-only model of instruction. We have seen a few surveys that have been sent out, people had to initially, you know, give some idea as to where they were leaning, this has consistently been around 30%. I believe right now, we have about 900 responses, about 30% have opted for remote-only instruction. They will, they will, they will have synchronous remote learning every day of the week. We, we, so in this process, we have met with people, we have talked to other schools, and keeping in mind, the cohort D students, I have yet to see a solid plan on how those students are having, their needs met equitably as compared to their cohort A, B, and C students, peers. Okay, here's the schedule, and I'm going to walk you through this. We have a couple of different models of this, that show like a student version and what we would see here. This is a half-day hybrid schedule. We modeled this similar to what Beverly was doing and some of what Marblehead was doing. So we took into account, we, we looked at some models out there, and how do we meet the needs of all students equitably? Keep it in mind, every student, every day. This plan checks all the boxes. So we have, if you look at Monday, period one, cohort A comes in the building on Monday and Thursday, they engage in in-person instruction, periods 1, 2, 3, 4. So we're narrowing the focus, we're limiting the amount of courses that students are having at once. At 11 o'clock, that cohort goes home. They engage in the asynchronous learning that we've always done, homework, reading, extension activities, writing. After lunch, it's a grab-and-go lunch, so we solve the problem of having to figure out how to put 800 students in a cafeteria or outside, so we have a grab-and-go lunch at that time, those students go home. At 11:35, cohort B has synchronous remote learning with a teacher. So we've kept students with their teachers, we honored their requests, and they engage in periods 1, 2, 3, 4 with a teacher in the afternoon. This is also when cohort D, our remote-only kids, also log in virtually with cohort B and have their Monday instructions, period 1, 2, 3, 4. On Tuesday, we flip it, cohort B comes in for in-person instruction for the morning, they go home, and they work on homework, asynchronous learning, they have extension activities, they could have virtual, virtual collaborative opportunities that, that teachers can set up through Google meets or through Zoom, and then cohort A comes, and then cohort A logs on with their teachers with cohort D. And again, we have every student, every day. You don't see cohort C on here, cohort C would have up to four days of in-person instruction, some students would be here for the traditional schedule, some students may stay the entire day depending on their level of need. On Thursday and Friday, the, you know, it just repeats, where we have periods 5, 6, 7. At this time, we've also been able to address the issue around building community, socialization in a manner that is controlled and that keeps us compliant with, with guidelines. So the teachers have agreed at this point in time to pilot an advisory program, which is a primary person model that develops relationships between an adult in the building and students. It's shown that students that engage in a model like, you know, in a model such as this and have relationships with adults, do better in school both academically and socially. So I'm, so I'm happy to say that that is something in this schedule that we're, that we're allowed, that, that we can offer students. And again, this is going to take some work with the teachers and with students as to what it looks like in practice. We also have a flex block in the afternoon that could be a combination of advisory for the remote-only students, it could also be an opportunity for some intervention, some reteaching, that 30-minute window on Thursday and Friday. So that is the, you know, the, the prime review, there's also a 25-minute mask break in the middle of the day, we have to give mask breaks, and again, this is, this is a conservative number on the time it's going to take to transition kids in between classes. That is, those are protocols that we are currently working on and how to manage the traffic flow within a very difficult physical plant structure. Dr. Vidalah, next slide, please. So if you look at this again, if you're a cohort A student, if you are in, last name beginning A to K, the yellow represents when you have instruction, so every student, every day. So, so if you see in this model, if you're a cohort A student, you would have, you know, in-person instruction on Monday and Thursday, and then synchronous live instruction with a teacher Tuesday and Friday. Moving to our Wednesday schedule, this was a very creative approach to how to solve Wednesdays. Again, going back to every student, every day, we thought it was important for all kids to come together. So in the morning, I've been able to adopt a 90-minute block of time for, for, for teachers to work with me for ongoing professional development. You know, I know we're offering the professional development right now, but I can't speak, you know, more highly enough on what ongoing PD is going to look like in this. And in this model on Wednesday, I've been able to carve out time for teachers to work with me, teachers to work together, teachers to work with the department, looking at things like, looking at best practices, looking at student work, tuning and calibrating assessments and, and rubrics, to make sure that we are continuing to assess and iterate, you know, as we see fit. There's an hour time in there for intervention and support. So if you were an AP teacher, maybe you want to have a discussion group for an hour, maybe for 30 minutes. If you are working with kids who are, who have been struggling, there's an hour in there to then reach out to students to have smaller groups, to have some one-to-one conversations with parents. That's an hour in that model that is for support intervention. Then we built in seven 20-minute structures of time where teachers have to create meetings with students. So again, this is when all the cohorts come together, A, B, and D. So you have your cohort A, you have your cohort B, and you have your remote-only students that are coming together. And this could be anything from a discussion group, it could be a check-in from the previous couple of days' instruction, or it could be, you know, a time for some formative checking in, seeing how students are doing, you know, with their assignments. That's the hybrid schedule. I think we next moved to the proposed remote schedule. Again, this took another leap of faith and the trust that we've built with the teachers' union. This is a block schedule, this is something that they are not quite used to. So looking at the block schedule, you know, we would have, if we were to be remote, we would quickly shift to this model, where we have four 80-minute blocks. Again, Monday, Monday with periods 1 through 4, Tuesday 5 through 7, with a flex block that we can use, whether it's for advisory, whether it's for some reteaching, whether it's for intervention. This narrows the focus, but it also digs deeper into depth of knowledge and content area, and less going this way with coverage. We put, we put teachers in front of students for chunks of time together that are, that are close together, and not having these seven, seven blocks throughout the day where we're on, we're on Zoom and Google Meet meetings. Looking at the lessons that we learned, we want to limit the amount of screen time, but in these 80-minute blocks, there is, there is, there are opportunities for multiple groupings of students, and it's a number, there are a number of ways that you can chunk the time. You could have, you know, four 20-minute sections where we're doing some, some, some early, you know, direct instruction, there could be breakout rooms, and then we come back to a larger group for a shareout, there are turn-in talks that can be done virtually, and then we have a follow-up. We can chunk this where we're doing two 40-minute sections, where we're splitting the groups in half. Anyway, as a former special educator, this is what we used to do when we went road teaching, when we'd split groups up, and, and, and we could certainly do that in a larger chunk of time. This works greatly for your science and CTE courses, where they have their students in front of them, they can do longer projects, they can do labs, and they can do more of that virtual hands-on work, so to speak. So we have a nice chunk of time in the middle for a screen break and for lunch. Those of us that have done these remote meetings for the last few months know, after doing these all day, we're tired, everyone's tired, students are tired, adults are tired, it's tough to maintain that, you know, that focus having seven different meetings. So we're going to limit the amount of meetings students would have in one given day. That's the schedule as proposed. We'd like to now thank everyone, the school committee, thank everyone listening at home. Jared and I emails are here, that parents can email us if they have questions, and I guess I'd like to feel the questions that we can clear up from the, for the members.
Thank you, Mr. Magno, thank you, Mr. Haas. Opening up to the school committee, any questions for the gentleman at this time? Mr. Hockman?
Thank you both for putting this together in a short period of time. It's nice meeting you, Mr. Magno.
Nice meeting you.
We haven't met yet. [laughing] We haven't met yet. And, Mr. Haas, it's nice to see you, I think, in your fourth or fifth different title, uh, since we've been together here. Um, what, what do the, my, my concern is, um, and, and I appreciate that you put this forward as a proposal and we have an opportunity to, um, work together, uh, with it, and I think it's a, it's a good start. Um, one of my concerns is we're sending kids to school half-day, um, instead of a full day. What are the, uh, and, and there may be less of a concern depending upon your answer to this question. The four classes that are in-person, uh, let's say on Monday with cohort A, um, and let's say Group A, I know educated, not we as an educational society like to use big words like synchronous and asynchronous, but we're talking to not only English language learner students, but we're talking with English language learner parents who don't understand that that means a person in front of you or not a person in front of you when, when learning is taking place. Uh, and cohort just means group, it's, it's just all it is. Um, but, and, and that wasn't, uh, uh, a, any comment on your presentation, I think it's a general comment as, as far as the language and the vocabulary that we use. But in any event, uh, Group A goes to school Monday mornings for four periods, and you have periods one, two, three, and four. Um, do, do you have a, an idea as to what subjects are gonna be taught during those periods?
Uh, that could be any subject.
Okay.
Again, the stu-, we kept the student's schedule, so when the students see their schedules, they're going to see the seven courses that they add on their schedule if this was two thousand nineteen and they were coming to school. So what, so we wanted to honor
Right.
Students' requests, so those four periods on Monday, it could be English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. It could be, if a student has, uh, a senior who is off in front of their lectives, it could be, uh, genocide, it could be AP Math, it could be AP Chem. So it would depend student to student, we have fifteen hundred students, it's probably fifteen hundred different variations of studies.
Yes, okay. So, um, my concern going into this and, and thinking about the hybrid model at the high school is that, a, and again, not to priori, not to, um, could, put, put one subject uh, against the other or anything, anything along those lines, but I'd like to see that the in-person instruction are gonna be the four core subjects. So that, so that students have an opportunity to have a teacher in front of them when they're learning math, when they're learning science, when they're learning, uh, English or ELL and, uh, history or social studies. Um, and, and, and an opportunity to, because I think one thing we all agree on is that teachers in front of students is the best, um, platform for learning. And, and there's a reason for that, because students are, are more engaged during those times as opposed to receiving an assignment to do. Um, I, I, you know, I see your Wednesday blocks give opportunities for perhaps sciences with labs and things like that, because there are larger blocks, and, and that sounds great. But, um, I, I don't, frankly, I don't wanna see a student going into school and, you know, have, um, and, and I hate to, you know, and I'm just gonna randomly bring up, uh, some, some subjects. I, I don't wanna see them take a genocide course, an art course, a, a music appreciation course, and a, uh, a, a theater appreciation course. No, again, those are just some random, and not, and then have to go home and take, uh, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies remotely without a teacher in front of them, because I think that's what it sounds like. And maybe I'm getting this wrong, so.
So, yeah, so, so the, what we, so if you look at this model again, students, whatever was on their schedule, and again, to, to chunk just English, Math, Science, and Social Studies would, could, would can be, would be next to impossible given the amount of requirements for high school students. These are classes the students taught, so genocide actually, um, meets a history requirement
History requirement, right.
For a, for a student. So the way I look at it is all of our courses are important if we're offering them, and they're all credit-bearing, and they need to do well in them. So they wouldn't have just those classes, whereas if you look at, at Thursday, if math falls on a Thursday for Group A, they would have in-person learning on Thursday. What you're looking at on the Monday is cohort A is in the building for one, two, three, four, but then teachers then teach the same lesson to cohort B virtually. And then the next day cohort B's in person and cohort A is virtually. So we have teachers with students at every point in the day. So there is no, you go home and learn math, because at some point in this schedule, you will have, if period five was your math class, you would have math, uh, uh, period, block number two on Thursday at eight ten. So you would never be alone learning a subject on your own. Can you go to the next scheduled, Dr. Nella? You can see, so this highlights where cohort A would be in the building
Sure.
With a pers-, uh, so we're, in the, in the, in the first part of the block before lunch, the yellow will show you when cohort A is in person, and then also when cohort B is synchronous with a teacher in the afternoon. So those four days, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, we've solved the problem of every student, every day. Where in previous models, in most schools, a kid comes in for school on Monday and then doesn't see a teacher again until Thursday. Where in this model, we put teachers in front of kids every day of the week, including Wednesday.
So, you, through, through the mayor to, to Mr. Magno, uh, you're saying that the, uh, remote learning Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday is gonna be with a camera in a classroom with a teacher in front of the camera and a student being able to access that on Zoom?
So I can't speak to where that teacher will be at that time, but yes, a teacher would be having a Zoom meeting with cohort B and D on Monday, periods one, two, three, four in the afternoon. It would be ver-, it would be synchronous, so with a teacher. So that teacher is just teaching virtually, so we'll have a Zoom meeting with the kids in cohort B and D in the afternoon. If it's cohort B, it's, I'm sorry, if it's Group B, it's Monday and Thursday. If it's Group A, it's Tuesday and Friday, so yes.
So, so I think, I think one thing to make clear, when, when we see the word remote up there, remote does not mean asynchronous.
Right.
Remote is just simply referring to online. So we might as well, we could, we can say it a different way, in-person and then online. So the teacher is teaching those eight blocks in a day, they're just teaching in-person to the A group in the morning and B group in the afternoon, and then it swaps.
So if I'm, again, I, I just wanna be clear, because there's
Yep.
There, there's a lot of negotiations going on and a lot of, you know, play, and, and I get that, that, that's important, you know, everyone has a, 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 not everyone has a chair at the table, but some of us have a chair at the table, and we wanna, I wanna make sure that this is clear. So if I'm in, if I'm in cohort, if I'm in Group A
Yep.
And I'm remote learning on Tuesday afternoon
Mm-hmm.
And I'm in period one from eleven thirty-five to twelve oh five, and I'm getting instruction, um, and I have a question, and through, whether it's a Google Hangout or a Zoom or whatever platform we're, we're gonna use, and, and I use the raise hand feature or the chat feature on that, I'm gonna get an answer within that period, within that block.
That would be as close to as in-person instruction that we will get. And that was the, the discussion that we had in my open day presentation with teachers is, I wanna, I want them to closely, you know, use the principles of, you know, uh, universal design for learning where the, what the students in the morning are getting should be very close to what the students in the afternoon are getting.
Okay.
So similar lessons, similar assessments, similar discussions, and that's why we built it where it's one, two, three, four, and one, two, three, four, or it's not one, two, three, four, and five, six, seven.
Yeah, no, I, I, I got you. So if I'm in, again, Group A, Tuesday morning from seven twenty to ten fifty-five, uh, what, what does that look like? I won't, I won't speculate.
Yeah, so, so if we had to, to talk about asynchronous learning, that would be the only time where we might talk about homework, where there's work from the previous day that you'd be doing during that time. But every day, there's going to be direct instruction from teachers. So there's never going to be days where it's just, you're on your own, and the student has to teach themselves. There will be time, though, where the student does have some self-guided work, where the teacher is not gonna be directly in front of them. But that's, it's not reflected on here, but anytime they're not in the yellow, the A would be given directed work by the teacher in those classes.
So, so this would be, you know, you, you, if we're looking at, uh, creating pathways for students and the understanding of, uh, student schedules and their cert-, and their, and their choice of when they work. Some of us in this room are morning people, some of us in this room are afternoon people and evening people. I like to work in the morning, so I may wanna get up at seven twenty and do my reading, my paper, my project at that time. Or I can choose the night before, I wanna stay up late and do it and sleep in a little bit. Um, so this gives the students the choice of, of when they, you know, when they choose to do their work. So again, we're just flipping the, the times where it wouldn't be this, I, I think asynchronous learning got a bad name where it was, here you go, do it on your own. Whereas this learning, it, with this work is work that we've always done in schools, where we came in and, and, and we, and we did some reading, and now you are going to work on the paper that you were, that has due on Friday. So we get back to, you have an assignment that has clear expectations, we know it's going to be graded, here is the time that you have to do it in, you choose what time that you create that, uh, you do your work.
No, I, I understand that, uh, a traditional pre-COVID school day didn't have live instruction for the full period, that there were assignments given during the course of the day. The, the difference is, first of all, I think that, um, non-live teacher in front of students, asynchronous learning, did get a bad name in the spring, and it was thrust upon everybody, and I think everybody did their best. But at least the survey and the data that we got, and I think you, you received, was that it wasn't terribly successful for PBD public schools. It was successful in other schools, right, particularly private schools, that had cameras in front of teachers who were directing live instruction. I mean, St. John's Prep has four cameras on each teacher, their students are in the classroom through a Zoom meeting, they're not, say, giving a, a, I don't wanna, a, a three-and-a-half-hour block of saying, do your assignments, right? And I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Magno, I'm not, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, there are points during the day where, a, a pre-COVID school day, where, you know, I as a student and, and you as a teacher, you know, you give me the opportunity to work on a, a bigger assignment or a longer assignment, not just me, but everybody else in the classroom, you know, and that might be for a twenty-minute portion of the period or a thirty-minute portion of the period. The, the difference here is that we're doing it for three-and-a-half hours. And, and I hear what you're saying, is you're, you know, you're giving, you know, students the opportunity to, you know, do the work on their time, and there will be more time as it's, it looks like we're not gonna have fall sports and a whole bunch of other stuff, some employment for some high school, uh, uh, students isn't gonna take place and things like that. Um, but, you know, a thirty-five-minute mask break to me is excessive, right? I mean, if I could see the periods, you know
Twenty-five.
What's that?
Twenty.
Twenty-five, excuse me. You know, if I could see, you know, more time i- in, in the periods in a ten-minute mask break or so. I think the more time, the more downtime there is, the more likelihood there is for a problem to develop, right? We're trying to keep kids socially distant, we're trying to keep, um, you know, everybody healthy to the best that we can, you know, with, with, with proper face coverings and everything else, and we need a break. I, I, I don't dispute that, but, you know, twenty-five minutes gives a lot of people a lot of time to, to do things that aren't, uh, things we want them to do. Um, so, and I think Mr. Haas has a
So, I would, just to speak to, like, take the mask break, for instance, so at our most recent, um, reopening meeting, we talked with the nurses about the, the guidance that we need to follow in order to give mask breaks. The first question was something as simple as, can you take a drink of water? And I, in the confines of our classroom, it's really not gonna be easy or feasible for a student to take their mask off to have a drink of water. Now we talk about, how does that student then take their mask off at, at all? Because now with the new studies on the aerosol in the air, the students can't simply just take their mask off in the corner of the room. So now we have to move to a point where we're getting the students safely to a place where they can't take their mask off, which in this case is gonna be outside.
Hmm.
We're safe to get everybody outside now, and, and even in talking with local PBD organizations that had, like, Little League over the summer and different organizations that had to have dots out on the floor, we now have to get out those seven hundred students into separate areas of ten feet spaced apart with teacher supervision, and then let them take their mask off for a period of time, and then have their masks back on, have them wash their hands, and then have them come back inside. So it's not that we're saying we want it to be a twenty-five-minute break, it's just we wanna be conservative with our numbers, because we don't wanna say it's a ten-minute break and then we're cutting into class time.
Yeah.
So I think that's, that's where our initial decisions went.
Yeah, no, and I, and I, and again, I appreciate the, the complexities and the difficulties in developing this plan. Um, just getting back to my first point, and then I'll, I think it was one of my first points, and then I'll yield to, I think other committee members have questions. My point, eh, eh, I, I think genocide is an important class. I think every student, you know, should, should be required to take it and learn about some horrific events that have taken place in human history, but it, it's, it's not a course that builds on itself, right? There are math classes, there's, you know, you need to have certain foundations in science and math and, and other, in English, you know, that, that build on, um, you know, later classes build on, you need to know grammar before you can write properly, you need to learn vocabulary before you can write prop-, you know, there's a whole bunch, you know, there are building blocks that get developed, and, and those are the courses that I'm saying, those still occur at the high school level, and those are the classes that I, I'm saying I'd like to see in-person learning, because I think that they're the most important. I'm not saying that the, that genocide isn't important, I believe it's, it's, it's incredibly important, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a standalone book as opposed to a series, you know, that an author writes and you kinda follow the series, you know, chronologically, and you get more out of it.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. Um, you know, I do believe that we can teach reading and writing and skills through any content area, whether it's genocide, whether it's music, eh, eh, what, you know, or whether it's math. Um, I, I think if we were looking to pare down the high school to English, Math, Science, and Social Studies, you're looking at de-leveling all courses, no AP, no honors, de-leveling everything, and just running English, Math, Science, and Social Studies and moving to a four-by-four block. That would be a huge undertaking, uh, at this time. Um, that would, and that's, that would be going against the grain of what the public wants as well. We heard that they, the students want to keep the courses that they have chosen, they've been here, some of them have been here for four years, they wanna take some of these courses, they were looking forward to these courses, but to, 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 to boil down the high school, you know, eight hundred and seventy-four sections of classes, three hundred and seventy-four, you know, course offerings, to just English, Math, Science, and Social Studies, um, is going to be next to impossible.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I'm not saying that those AP offerings and those higher-level offerings shouldn't be offered, but I think that those are more suitable to remote learning than the four core courses, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Let's open it up, Mrs. Dunn, turn it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, both of you. I have a million questions on safety, procedures, I'll bring those up later. This was excellent, and I wanna thank you for doing this, because you know what? I really appreciated the fact that you tried to give as close as possible to the normal schedule to our students. And I could not imagine how you were gonna do it, and I think you did it. And the other thing I like, to be perfectly honest, is you put in some of the improvements we were looking forward to with this school year before the COVID virus hit. That social-emotional piece of making the connections with an adult in the program, you fit it in there, and it's really important now, but you got it in there. That was really a dream, and I will be honest, I honestly thought that any of the progress we were gonna make, any of the new initiatives we were gonna undertake would just be, you know, we can't do it because we need to hunker down and, you know, we've gotta slog through the virus. You, you, you did a great job with this, and we've even got the time in there for our CTE students now to be able to do the right program, or for the science teachers to actually do an experiment with the classes. This, this is really very, very good, and I want you to know how much I appreciate that and how impressed I am with how you listened to everybody and took to heart what they felt were deficiencies last year, and you addressed each of those with that schedule too. I'm, I'm thrilled with the schedule, I really am. And, you know, another important thing, people, again, they're not thinking, like, you know, the world has stopped. Actually, it hasn't. Those students, many of them especially like the seniors, their schedules have been built for whatever they wanna do when they get out of school. Those seniors right now are applying to college, and in order to get into college and be competitive, if we limited what they were going to take this year, they may not be able to get into the college program that they've been working for, for, for four years or even longer. Some of them, you know, with foreign language requirements for whatever they're going forward with, they start thinking of that in middle school. If we put the brakes on that because of the virus, we wouldn't have been doing the right thing for our students. This looks very equitable also. I think it's very, very good the way that you've planned that out so that everybody is going to be able to get through their seven periods with their teacher. Um, it, it, it makes sense to me, and I, I, I can't say it enough, I, I really appreciate what you did, because I didn't think it was gonna happen. I really intrally was waiting for some, just, yeah, you know, all right, everybody's gonna go to school, we're gonna get through this. This is good, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm really glad.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Lippiel?
Through to the chair, thank you, uh, for both of you for all your hard work, and I appreciate it as well, but I'm, I'm confused, I think I'm confused, and I think probably a lot of parents are confused. If I look at that schedule, if I'm just, you know, lame, and I, I look at that schedule, If I look at that schedule, if I'm just, you know, lame, and I look at that schedule, I say, wow, my son or daughter is going half-days for school. So, I think if you could explain to me maybe some of the parents out there. So, if I'm in Cohort A, after I grab and go my lunch, you know, what are the expectations for the rest of the day? And then also, too, there's some, a bunch of parents have asked me, why can't we? And, you know, maybe you'll have a very good answer. So, if I'm in Cohort A and I go on Mondays and Thursdays, why can't I have a regular periods one through seven? Then the students in Cohort B zoom in on our days on Mondays and Thursdays, like, almost mimicking a full day? I think that's, from where I stand, a lot of parents have asked me that. Why can't we just mimic a regular school day, whether we're in or out? And, yeah, I mean, if you could answer to that.
Please, through the chair, Mr. Hockman. You know, Mr. Hockman, we brought up St. John's Prep. St. John's Prep spent over a million dollars to outfit all of their classrooms with Zoom technology. They're a very different, you know, facility than what we have at PBD High School. I also want to, you know, touch upon, you know, what good teaching and learning is. Good teaching and learning, I think what we've heard in some of the comments is what we used to do when we were younger. A lot of that was lecture, that was sitting in our seats, that was being compliant. It was not teaching and learning. And to just open up a Chromebook and say, well, can I just listen in while other kids are working? It devalues, I think, what we do as educators. It's, you know, it isn't just listening in. There's more to instruction, there's more to learning than just a teacher talking for 45 minutes. I think a lot of people use the word lecture. And lecture, in my opinion, is not good instruction. There's a lot more that goes into that. There's more, you know, time for students to be doing, interacting, and working with teachers in prescribed activities that teachers themselves are developing. But, just being able to zoom in, we don't have the infrastructure for us. We don't have cameras in rooms. We don't have the sound system. We don't have, everyone does not have a projector, from my understanding. But, it isn't as easy as just listening into the content. You know, I'm a parent myself. I have a daughter who's going to be a senior this year. And so, I know, and right now, my wife is online with our high school, with knowing what's going to happen. But, right now, with our capabilities and our challenges, this is the best plan that we are putting forward. Again, it's, you know, looking at where we are with the physical structure of the high school, what we have for limitations, it isn't as easy as just someone looking in. If we were St. John's Prep, and I'm a graduate of St. John's Prep, as is the superintendent, you know, they have a great, you know, plan that they implemented, because they have a lot more money and dominance than we do.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, this still no, the jury's out on what the Zoom room looks like. They haven't done it yet. So, to be able to really effectively teach, and teaching is both an art and a science, but being able to interact with people and get them to engage when you're face-to-face is an art. And you're not going to be able to engage with the people behind the computer. If the laptop is here and you want to move about the room and interact and be dynamic, you're not paying attention to these people. And so, what we've decided, and it's a real decision that we made, and it's a calculated decision, and it's the best decision that we think is for students, is to have these kids working independently while we engage with the people who are live. When they go home, this person is now on the computer engaging in the full focus is on that second group of students. So, if you're in the morning and I'm in the afternoon, we both have Mr. Magno as our teacher. He's focused on you and you're engaged, and he's making sure that you're doing it. And then, he's giving you your assignment, and you're accountable to him tomorrow, because you're going to see him again. Whether you see him through the screen or whether you see him in person, you're still accountable to him. And so, you have to do that work. And I think that was one of the big things that we heard, you know, to Ms. Dunn's point. The big thing we heard was, how are the kids going to be accountable to the teachers? Well, if you give them the work to do and see them the very next day, then they know that they're accountable to that teacher again tomorrow. And I think that was one of the calculated decisions that we made.
And certainly keep in mind is, when Cohort A is in school, that cohort is now less than 12, mostly less than 12 students. So, when you have them, you have a very small group. With some of these classrooms, maybe smaller than some of our special education classrooms. And then when you have Cohort B in the afternoon, that's a small group, and Cohort D is joining in. So, we kept the equity with the students that preferred remote only, which is a very large number. The original plan was, we were going to put them on a program and kind of let them navigate school themselves, which we're taking 300 of our students, 300 families, that may not have ever seen the teacher or other check in. I have yet to see anybody that has solved the remote-only population well, other than just let them, you know, just let them, you know, chime in and someone can open a Chromebook and they can listen. So, really, in this model, we really made sure that we addressed the equity and access for all of our students.
So, Cohort B, I mean, there's going to be account, right? Because if, again, parents looking at this quick, they're going to say, wow, my son or daughter's done it at 11 o'clock. That's it. But, there's going to be accountability, because from 11:35 to, say, 2 o'clock, they should be doing their work, and then when they go into school on Tuesday, there's going to be an expectation of those assignments to be done, correct?
Correct, and that's the work that we'll be doing with our teachers as to what is the other school work, school work look like? What are those assignments? They should be assignments that we do later in the week. But, again, this also gives our students the flexibility of decide where and when they learn. We're looking like, you know, anytime, anywhere learning. You know, my daughter's going to be 18. She works at Market Pass, get in the booth. Maybe she works between 12 and 4, and then comes home and works and does her schoolwork in the afternoon. Those are some of the flexibility that we give our students, our older students as well.
Okay. No, that explains, it makes me feel a little better, too. And also, too. Well, again, because I'm just picturing a parent just walking by and seeing this, and they're going to say, wow, they're done at 11 o'clock. I think it's important that we reiterate that there are going to be expectations and accountability for those students, and hopefully, you know, that it goes smoother. Also, too, access to guidance counselors, when would that fit in during the course of a week?
Well, in talking with the guidance.
Yeah.
One thing that we typically don't have during the school day is an opportunity for the guidance to meet with students without pulling them out of class.
Right.
So, now that we have this flex advisory, this win-remote time.
Okay, that's one that would be.
We have built-in time, that's not only guidance, that's also college visits virtually. That's also any time that a specialist needs to meet with a student where they're not supplanting education. They're pulling them in a time designed for those types of situations.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Lippiel. Mr. Arnottis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Magno and Mr. Haas, thank you so much for this. I feel like we asked you guys to climb Mount Everest in a week. And, you know, I'm really impressed seeing this. And I think the big point and the thing that I'm taking away from this is, and I know we're talking about what some of the private schools are doing. One of the things that I always promote when I'm talking to people about the value of PBD High School, and, you know, I don't like to bring up my age often, but as someone who has went through that school system in the past decade, I know just how valuable it is, because we offer so many unique, diverse courses in that building. You know, and I don't know, there are some that I'm sure were probably not going to be. But, I've always said, if you wanted to be a chef, there's no better place than to go through PBD High School. You know, if you want to be a musician, there's no better place to go through than PBD High School. If you want to go into history or math, we offer a million different ways to dig yourself, you know, into that subject if you wanted to. And I think here, you're doing your best to make sure that we offer just as much of those options available to students than we would if this was a normal time. And I also think, you know, I'm just digesting this, and that's not a criticism, because I would have given you as much, we could have had this weeks from now, and I still would have been interested. But, you know, I'm sure going to probably develop questions here as we go. A couple just right off the bat. And this may be more stuff that needs to be fleshed out. I know we're talking about, we're going to go back to grading, and I think that was very important to parents. So, I am curious, what does the difference, if I'm taking a test, if I'm in-person versus remote, look like? Have you guys gotten there yet? Is there any conversation on that?
I mean, so, we're in the early stages of examining. Initially, what we had talked about was, what is an online assessment versus an in-person?
Yeah.
But, now we're starting to look at it more of that UDL model.
Yeah.
For people who don't understand what UDL is, it's the idea that it's interchangeable. It doesn't matter if you're in-person, it doesn't matter if you're online.
Yeah.
It's available to everyone. So, we're going to work with our, we're going to be doing some PD on instruction and assessment this week. And then we're going to continue to work on instruction and assessment. It's going to be a reoccurring theme. And we're going to develop within each department, what are the best practices for assessment? We're going to share that with parents, we're going to share that with students. We're going to keep talking about, what does good assessment look like? We're going to look at the literature, we're going to test things. So, we're going to become, we're going to work through those issues that we experienced. We're not going to be able to give pen and paper pencil tests as we might have if we were in-person. We're going to have to figure out, what are those project-based assessments? What are those evidence of learning that go beyond just a multiple-choice test?
Okay, great, thank you. Now, I know we were talking about, because you are out, what, at about 11 o'clock here? So, in those later remote courses, are you going to be, or I should say, are the teachers taking attendance per course? So, there's a consistency there anyway, so it's not like you could just go goof off. You're in class, basically, type of thing.
Yes, and we'll have to do some work around, you know, what that looks like. There are certain procedures and protocols that we're developing around, you know, do you have to have your screen visible and things like that? Those are all things that we need to certainly flesh out with as we get into some more of the finer details. But, yes, attendance will be taken. That was something that came up as a very common piece of feedback, but students will be accountable for being there.
Great, thank you for that. And I know, and I think it's important for people to know, they're building this schedule basically around what is probably going to be a millions of safety precautions that we are going to have to institute here, and I'm not going to get into that subject right now. I know we'll have a conversation probably later on. But, in general, I think this, for the most part, is doing our best to provide as close to what we could normally provide while implementing those safety features. And I think that's really important, and I know we're talking about, you know, Zooming and the teachers, and we're all going to have to figure that out. But, for the most part, I do think people should be happy that they're going to have the opportunity to have those touchpoints with teachers, because I know we kind of kept hearing that a lot last week, that these teachers need to be physically with their students at least in some capacity here. And I think you have done that by creating this. And I, you know, I know we're talking about the value of certain classes versus others, but I think, you know, some people take certain classes that have an interest in where they may choose to go in life. And, you know, I do think high school, whether you're going off to college or if you're going off into a trade, you tend to find your path there. And we're doing our best to make sure that even in this chaos, these kids can still find that path. So, I want to thank you for that. I'm just, again, wrapping my head around this now. I might have more questions, but I'll hold off for now. But, right off the bat, I think this is a really good hybrid piece. You know, my only question is, did you say the mask breaks are outside as well? So, logistics, how are they coming in and out of the building? Are we, I don't know how we'll keep six feet in the high school hallways, but.
And I think that is why we built in the 25 minutes. We could potentially get it down to a much shorter amount of time, given protocols and practice, much like a fire drill. But, at this point, we can't promise safely getting people out of the building any quicker.
Okay.
That's why we built that up.
Gotcha.
I will say, these guys are pretty good with logistics.
Well, I actually, I have it right under your names. I have kudos for graduation, because I thought that went really well. So, actually, my, one other question I have, I'm seeing here. What's it look like right now with the response we get with teachers willing to do in-person versus fully remote? Do we have anything? Do we have those numbers, or is it too early to talk about that?
I think it's a little too early. We have some numbers, but I think.
If we need to wait to have that, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that's a discussion for a little later.
Gotcha, okay. I'm good for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnottis. Mr. Miko?
Great, thank you through the chair of the committee and to these two here, Mr. Magno and Mr. Haas. Thank you very much. I would have loved to have been a fly on your wall when you heard we were going hybrid last week around 11 o'clock, or whatever time it was. I do agree with, through the chair, to Mr. Hockman in regards to calling these Group A and Group B versus Cohort A, Cohort B, because we do have to remember, we do have a very diverse community. I think maybe we can do that. And with the asynchronous and synchronous, maybe we can just change the wordage down a little bit, and that way it's easier for everyone to follow. But, the city of PBD is just so fortunate right now, and the students are. There aren't many districts that are this far into it. I mean, I haven't looked at a lot of them, but I can assure you that we're one of the largest districts to be going back hybrid. And we had teachers in buildings today for training, for PD. I can't say how important that is to us and to the city right now, because if you asked me two weeks ago, I didn't think that was going to be possible, and I didn't think this would be possible. I've looked at a lot of schedules over the years. I've had some great schedules, and I've looked at some of my own schedules and said, oh, I hate it. This is the best we can probably do under the circumstances. We're still in a pandemic, you know? We're trying to get every kid in front of teachers, and we're trying to get every kid the class or classes that they want. And I know Ms. Dunn's a big proponent of that, of all the, through the chair to Ms. Dunn, with all the different electives and the CTE program. So, we're doing that, we're meeting that, and we're also meeting the fact that parents wanted to have more than just four classes. They wanted their kids to get into all of those electives, and kids want that. So, I think that's so important as well. I have a couple of questions, and this could either go to Dr. Vidal or to our two administrators. In regards to DESI and standards, I think last year, and you may not know this yet, but we'll see. Last year, during that remote period, DESI came out and we changed some of the standards around to accommodate the short period of time. Has there been any talk about that because of a situation where we may only have two in-person and two remote classes, where they may have to contract the standards a little bit?
Yeah, so, in the spring, they looked at the power standards and they narrowed some of the standards. They have not done that at this point. We are responsible for all the standards. So, what we're doing is, part of our training is looking at some of the standards that may have been missed from March until June, and we're looking to embed them at the appropriate places throughout the year as we do the year-long plan, knowing that some of our curriculum spirals, that if there was a geometry standard in grade seven that is revisited in grade eight, and there's some prerequisite skills that were missed in, say, March or April, that will be taught in December, we're going to put that in December. We're not going to front-load the three months that they missed. And so, by doing that, we'll thoughtfully design our lessons. And what we're doing over the first 10 days of PD is identifying, what does the week look like? And identifying a week long. And so, for our high school kids, we're really prepping them for college, for college and career. And we're giving them opportunity where there's a longer, more intentional block, and we're thoughtfully giving them what they need, and we're putting forth reasonable expectations, and they'll have that time to do some work independently. But, also, in that time when the Group A students are away in the afternoon, they could still touch base with specialists or guidance counselors who can get to them remotely now when they never could. So, just because you're not in with your core subject teacher, you could be engaging with people when you're at home in those, it's not just four hours of off-time, you know? You would still be engaging with adults, and we would still be teaching all of the standards throughout the year. We would just be doing it in a different way, through a more thoughtful way. So, we're reimagining what we're doing, but having that professional development upfront and thinking about that holistically over the course of the entire year is really how we're going to address those gaps. And we know that this is a little bit different, but we also think that this is an opportunity for us to reimagine what education looks like and give kids a little bit more autonomy, because I think what we noticed from our PTSO kids and from our kids who really stepped up while we were gone, our kids can do wonderful things, and we just have to raise those expectations for them. And having those high expectations and personalizing that learning, our kids will adapt, and our kids will thrive, because they'll have more freedom to dive deeper into their content areas.
Great, thank you. Also, and I know you'll probably talk about it later on, in regards to athletics, it was all over social media today. Will there be a chance for parents to maybe change their minds going from hybrid to remote? Or, you may have a situation where parents have really thought about this, where they may, their kids may see their grandparent during the week, and I've had people call me and say, well, I may have to go fully remote, because once my kid goes to school, that bubble just got bigger. And I don't want to take that chance of my child going to the grandparents' house on Thursday or Friday or whatever day it is. So, is there still time for people to make some change? I know it's a nightmare numbers-wise, but we may get, you know, especially with the athletic situation breaking, and again, with people giving it more thought with grandparents and other people in the family, I just hope that parents could have that, maybe that second chance to relook at it if they have to. I know it's a nightmare numbers-wise, but.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, we want to give families an option, and that was one of the big things that we decided, the hybrid model with the remote option. And we also want to work with families. Now, given that we don't want yo-yoing back and forth between one to another, we do think that we can work with families. The high school model in itself, having that remote every single day and that touchpoint, you know, those kids will have a better opportunity to be able to go from hybrid to remote or to jump back in the class, because they'll be assigned to that same teacher. At the elementary and middle school levels, we would want to work with the person over a longer period of time. And if there's an opportunity to change, and we can provide them with a seat in the class, we had talked to our leadership team and said, you know, we would treat a student who wanted to go from remote to hybrid the same way we would teach, that we would treat a student who moved from Danvers to PBD. You know, it's a move-in, you, anyone who moves into the city of PBD has a right to attend, same if you wanted to go from remote to hybrid. We just don't want to see that back and forth. So, we're willing to work with families, and we want to just do it in a thoughtful way.
Great, thank you. I'll yield, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Miko. Mrs. Kopfner?
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. Magno, Mr. Haas, thank you so much for this. I truly appreciate your work and the team that put this together. I do realize that this was a vote that, you know, that I was a part of, and I felt confident that you. was a vote that, you know, that I was a part of, and I felt confident that you could put this together, which is why I voted that way. So thank you for that. I will say, looking at it, you know, tonight for the first time, I was a little taken aback that it was a half a day, but it's explained well, and I understand it, and you made it possible so that they can take all of those classes. Couple of things I want to touch on, having the opportunity to listen to my colleagues, some things I want to mention in regards to Mr. Hockman's point about some of the classes that, core subjects, those type of things. My concern would be, and I understand your explanation about it, my concern is more of a class that, that has a hands-on, like a lab, kind of maybe making sure that those kids are able to be in their in-person class if they have like a lab, or a cooking, or, I know if my kid wasn't cooking, I wouldn't want him to do it at home, I'll tell you that much. So, you know, but if you can do it, you can do it if you can't. That was just something that I was thinking of. And then, some issues on attendance, and some issues on how we're kind of tracking everybody who's, who's chosen what. I know there's been a lot of talk about, some parents are getting the emails, you know, it's time to make that choice if you want to be remote or not. Some parents are saying, I haven't gotten it, it's going to spam. Do we have somebody who's actually contacting and matching up every student's name to every definite choice?
So that is something that we talked about over the past week. Again, I'm new coming into the school system. I can tell you what we, this is the same situation that I encountered in my past school, and I'm sure all schools are encountering, is, you know, when we, the email accounts that are in Aspen are, if parents don't check those emails. So we've come across with graduation where a parent may have three or four different email accounts. If the account that they put into Aspen is not the one that they check, is problematic. So what we've been doing is, we've been following up with phone calls, we've been following up with emails. One thing that we will talk about this year, and we already talked about it with the clerks in the office, is, you know, making sure that as we get people on the phone, is verifying the information like you would have if your doctor, they come in, can you verify that you still live here, and you still have this email address? I think what we need to, we need to do some work with the, with the community on, is if you change your information, you need to let us know. And we can continue to find ways to reach out, and find ways to have those conversations. But those will be things that we, those are structures that we'll be looking at where our limitations are. Right? If Aspen is not aligned to the email that you check, or same as if you move, if you move and don't change your address, your email gets returned to us. At least at that point, it tells me we can send people out. But we did it with graduation, where we had, you know, people we hadn't heard from, and went through any means possible to make sure that we reached out to them. It's going to be a huge undertaking with 1,500 kids. I think the more that we can continue to find systems and structures in the community, because it can't just be the high school. It has to be all schools that have the same, same type of, same type of systems, really, where if people change their information, then they need to let us know. If I understand correctly, I believe you went to an online system now, where parents can change information, is what I understand. I could be wrong with that. Was that just when we register kids?
Just when you register.
Okay.
Yeah. So that is definitely one of my concerns, that even the people that have the correct information in there, check your spam, those type of things. So I just kind of want to make sure that we have somebody who is checking, you know, our complete roll call sheets, and we have an answer for that, because what I envision is somebody just not going to school, somebody showing up the wrong day, you know, and then we're going to have, which I still think is going to happen, you know, waiting for a bus that's not coming to pick them up on that day. I'm pretty sure it's going to be chaotic. So I'm just hoping that we have somebody who's, who's doing that touch point, making contact with everyone that's enrolled. And then, a question about the fully remote. If we, and I'm not sure who's going to answer this, if we have a student who is out for any extended period of time, and they're, they're able to be educated during that time, but not able to attend our building, for whatever reason that may be, can they, if they were hybrid, can they jump into the fully remote?
I can answer that. So we took that into account when we developed the schedule. So if you look at this, originally, we were talking about this Remote Learning Academy, where kids would kind of be pulled out of the high school, so to speak, and on this like special program. You know, we looked at that, and kids really wanted to be connected with their peers and connected with their courses. So if you look at this model right here, these students are in the same classes with their in-person, with their in-person peers. So it's easier to move from being in-person to the remote, as it is to go from the highly remote to the in-person. We really just need to make sure that there's a seat in that space for you. So in theory, yes, if, you know, if there's a situation where a kid, or a student has to have surgery, or there's something that, you know, prevents that student from coming in the building. We also looked at guidance around students that potentially refuse to wear masks could be part of the consequence, could be the remote, you know, only option. But in this model, it's the same exact courses and teachers and instruction as if they were in the in-person, you know, A and B groups. But I do, we do need to talk about that case-by-case basis, because what we don't want is, I can't come in next week, and then it just, it throws off the balance. So, and that's the issue around attendance. Where we have, well, I'll just come this afternoon rather than be here in the morning. And that's where this starts to, we take a, we take a plan and put that into practice, and that's where we seem to see some of those issues. So we do want people to commit where, I want my student going remote, and not try to do them back and forth. But in this model, and we put it in that form that went home, that this plan does allow, of all the plans that we came up with, if that were to be the case, this is easier to do in theory than some of the other models that we came up with.
Yeah. Thank you. And I would expect it would be case-by-case, extenuating circumstances, those type of things, for that person to go from, my brain was thinking, from the hybrid to the remote, because they couldn't be in the building. Some other things that, you know, we talked about, that some of my colleagues talked about, you know, was the social-emotional piece. You know, a lot of this decision came down to that social-emotional piece, you know. A lot of parents that reached out really wanted their kids to be in the building, to see their peers, those type of things. And, and this does accomplish that in some form. You know, some of the things, talking about building our community, and you talked a lot about, you know, what it used to be like. Once we kind of get this nailed down, I am hoping that the high school is going to start looking at what it used to be, and building communities in regards to, say, like our seniors with their clubs and their activities, and still being able to have a piece of those things. I think you know how important it is. You said you have a senior. We just heard that our fall sports are now going to be in the dead of winter. That's tough. That's really hard. And you and I talked a little bit before the meeting, I saw you real quick coming in, and I threw a couple of things at you, and we didn't get a chance to finish it. But something as simple as the yearbook, you know, I grabbed your ear on that about the yearbook club is gone, you know, who's putting that together? You know, we still need to make sure that these seniors are getting everything that's due to them the best we can. And something as simple as the yearbook club, you know, I think is something that we can, that we can handle. You know, I want to make sure they're still going to get the same, there's just so many things I don't want them to miss out on.
Can I clarify that?
Yes, please.
So we did not get rid of the yearbook club.
Okay, great.
Yearbook ran at the high school as a class.
Yep.
A teacher was overseeing as part of the academic day.
Yep.
In being able to go back to protecting what's important, and academics and standards of learning, that teacher needed to teach an additional history course in order to make sure our students were given instruction. In my opinion, yearbook is a club, like you had mentioned, and clubs belong after-school hours. So in this model, we could do a virtual club for yearbook. Kids, kids could be, kids should be putting that together. That person that was doing yearbook needs to be teaching a history class right now. So in order to make sure that our students are being taught, that's what's important. And I understand that sports are important, and clubs are important, and clubs are important as well. That's what gives life to school. You know, keeping in mind that, right now, we're under these strict guidelines that we have to follow, that we want to start school and make sure that we get this correct. Mr. Miko said, we are the largest school in this area that's attempting this. And we have, you know, 700 and something students, almost 100 and something staff members, and we have to still focus on how we move students throughout the day, how we get them from point A to point B, how we line them up in the morning and sanitize their hands as they come in the building, and how we do mask breaks and sanitize their hands when they leave. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done. But clubs and activities are important. We want to make sure that we get this right first. And sports are important. We need to make sure that we get the art of school right, where kids are in-person, so we can eventually have sports. One thing I do want to, you know, clarify, Mr. Haas and I are wearing our masks tonight throughout this presentation, to model what our students and staff are going to have to do all day long. We can't, they can't take their masks off to, to engage with, you know, with each other. So social-emotional learning and socialization are two very different things. So, you know, I do want to prepare, you know, the community at home and the students that, we still have a pandemic, and there are still a number of structures that we have to enact as school employees to keep everybody safe for the guidelines. So students aren't going to be wearing masks most of the day. We can't have groups of students in the parking lot hanging out and taking photos. So there's a number of things I do want to make clear, that school is going to look very different. If we can have in-person schooling, I would love to have in-person schooling. But it's going, it can't be the idea of what it was and what it's, what it used to be. We are, we are in this, whether we, we're not here to argue whether it's COVID-19, or whether we agree on these things or not, but we have a very strict guidelines on which we have to engage with students in school.
Thank you. And just to be clear, so that you don't mistake in what I said as replacing a subject during the school day for a club. My sentiment is, building upon what we're trying to get back to be normal. In addition to that, I would just like to focus on some things on the back end that would make things normal for our kids, because that's, you know, really what it comes down to be. So please don't mistake in what I said as it's more important, because I realize it isn't. But it is important, some social pieces, and when possible, if they're after those core subjects, that we look at our clubs, we look at the fun things that our kids were doing. So I just want to make that clear. And, you know, another piece of that, when we're talking about social-emotional and problems that can develop on downtime and those type of things, I also did speak to you a little bit about attendance, and making sure that all of our children who are supposed to be where they're supposed to be, which is going to be a lot of moving parts where they're supposed to be, that we have accountability of them. And I did talk to you a little bit about, you know, like our attendance pairs and those type of things, trying to make sure that we are holding everyone accountable, that we are reaching out to parents when their child did not show up for that Zoom class, you know, those type of things. So, you know, I talked to you a little bit about that. Again, we didn't get to talk very long. Just, you know, maybe looking, if I asked you how you thought that would look, another, you know, something else that the board should look at, you know, we don't have them anymore. Do we need them? How are we going to be checking in on kids? Who's going to be calling the parents? There's so many, it's not Monday through Friday, you know, you're looking for the same kids. It's in the afternoon, in the evening, you know, in the, this day, that day, all different cohorts, groups. So, you know, I just kind of took you aside and kind of tried to bend your ear a little bit, like, how are we going to do that? How are we going to handle, we don't have those positions anymore. Who's going to be checking on those kids and calling their parents? Because now, you know, basically, some parents are going to work, and you don't know if the kid got up and logged on, or went out, or any of those type of things. So I just wanted to, the other thing is like requirements for staying out, you know, and why you're out when you, when you call out sick. And there's going to be a lot of different things, just when a kid's not there, and we need to know why. So we did talk about that. So do you have any idea, or is that something that you need to look a little bit further into?
So, one of the first things that we did in the last couple of weeks is, you know, and I thank the committee, for the longest time, it was me, Mr. Haas, and Mr. Kroll as building administrators of the high school. We repurposed some positions to bring back both team positions. I need to be able to effectively evaluate my staff and make staffing recommendations at that time. I think we can look at the policies and procedures, the staff that we currently have, and making sure that the people that we have working for us currently are, are used to maximum efficiency. So until I make a decision on whether I need attendance pairs, I need to make sure that I evaluate my staff and their capabilities first. There's a lot of positions right now that I could have, that we're, that we're short on. You know, we, that's going to be a concern moving forward. So I want to make sure that when we're spending money, we're spending it wisely, and we're making sure that the people that we have for us are absolute necessities.
Yeah. No, and I appreciate that. And I see the difficulty where you just started, and it's on a typical school year, so you don't have the advantage of kind of knowing how the building, you know, re-ends and the people that re-end it. So I think that's sometimes where, you know, as a representative of my, of my community, or as a parent, as, you know, pretty much anybody, just kind of throwing things out there and just saying, geez, you know, there's a little bit of concern about that, and asking you that. So I appreciate the fact that you're going to evaluate what you have, and I just wanted to let you know that, you know, that is a concern of mine, just because there's so many moving parts. I don't want any kids to slip through the cracks during this time, because it's, you did a great job with the schedule, I appreciate it, and your team that worked on it, and I would just hate for somebody to kind of not follow it, and we lose them. You know, I think this is a really easy time to lose a student, one way or another. So I just want to make sure that we're good on that. But, thank you. Welcome.
Thanks, Mrs. Koppener. I wanted to go to Mrs. Dunn, and then back to Mr. Anotis.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. I just have a couple of follow-up questions. The schedule that you've shown us for the hybrid model, if we do have to go remote, if our numbers of COVID cases rise, will you stick with that schedule for the remote program for the students if that happened?
So, actually, we would not stick with that schedule. We would move to more of the 80-minute block schedule, where we would have longer chunks, we would have all cohorts of kids together. We wouldn't have to separate. So what we would do is enact, instead of, because we have no need for movement, we have no need for transition. The only transition we would need is 10 minutes in between Zoom, you know, meetings. But again, this, this structure, there's a lot of good in this structure if we have to go remote. This puts a lot of, this puts kids in front of teachers at greater lengths of time for more consistent chunks of time. This is going to take some work with teachers, of teaching in the 80-minute block. So this is something that they haven't done before. But this, the 80 minutes could be separated into a number of different ways that the teachers see fit. So I, what I wouldn't want is someone talking for 80 minutes. We want to make sure that students are engaged. Again, you could split the blocks in half, you could have breakout sessions. But this is an excellent plan if we have to go to a remote-only situation. And I'm confident that whatever situation that we're in, our teachers are going to do the best to make sure that our students are engaged and learning. But if we have to go, this does maintain some of those same structures that we talked about.
Yeah. It does. Thank you. Because it's, I mean, years ago, we had what was called a rotating schedule. So you always had a chance of, you know, if you weren't good in math, and you had math first period on a Monday, but you were late in the afternoon, by Friday, you had math in the afternoon, and you could, you could ace things. And it gave everybody that chance to use their own strengths during, and I can see that in this, both of these schedules. And that was one thing I did appreciate. So thank you. I did have one of the, it's a question or suggestion, or actually a request. One of the things that I think would be helpful is, I know you try to contact everyone through Aspen, and emails go out, and I'm, I'm speaking as a parent of graduates, but also, of course, as a, as an elected official. There are many questions that come our way, and we don't know where to direct the people. And I would like to suggest that on our website, we have, you know, a frequently asked questions section for each level, for elementary, middle, and high school. I think that would be easy for people who, for whatever reason, they're not getting the email, and I would put frequently asked question number one. I'm not getting emails. How do I take care of this? Answer, you need to contact blah, 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 blah. Okay? Right there. Make that answer number one. And then the other questions that people have, there are a lot of very similar questions, that, you know, they come to us. If you could compile them, and there are very specific questions. I am not saying that you can't, you know, you've got that coverall at the bottom. And in all other cases, please contact Principal Magno or Superintendent Vidal. I think that that would help people, because they don't need any specific password, they don't need anything specific to see that, because it would be on our website. And I think that that could be something that could help everyone. This presentation was great, and I actually would like to ask if a lot of, even at the last meeting, if any of these PowerPoints could be posted on our website, so that people could see them. It might help them be able to understand it a little bit more. Honestly, it might generate more questions. That happens too. But we can all learn from those questions, because then we're going to see, what, what did we miss? What didn't we explain? What didn't we explain? And how can we explain it? And if enough people come up with it, goes on that frequently asked question page. So, um, even, even something like Mrs. Carpenter brought up about the clubs and after-school activities, those are important. And right now, all through this, I know one group that has met is the PTSO and they've done it through, um, Google Classroom. So there are ways of having those meetings to keep those kids together, to be able to have them sharing their interests. And I also understand, we can't bring those up yet, you've got to get schools started. I don't think they ever started the first month of school anyway. I, I honestly can't remember, I mean, people anticipated, they knew the, the club they were going to join, but I don't think they started right off anyway. I think there was a time when, I mean, separate from athletics, I think that those after-school activities, people waited until we had, you know, a couple of weeks in. And, um, I think we should encourage them and try to make them happen. And like you said, people, people need to remember, normal is gone right now. It's, it's a, normal is history. Everything right now is very different and we want to get back to what was comfortable and what we, what we knew, that's normal. But right now, this is how it has to be. And just trying to do as much as we can to, you know, cherish those traditions and those activities that people have looked forward to and have enjoyed, they really are important and they should be encouraged, but they might have to take a couple more weeks until we get, we get into our new normal that'll change in an hour.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Good ideas. Mr. On Notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just have one question that might be probably a little further down the road than it should be, but I do want to just give you another note here, because it hasn't gone unnoticed, at least to me, that you've maintained your masks the entire time here as we take them off to talk for a few minutes. I know you guys, when you're actually in the building, doing this on a day-to-day basis for hours on end, you know, we're asking you to, to do all this and you are going to have your masks on primarily for most of that time. So that hasn't gone unnoticed, um, with me, how difficult it is to even talk for a few minutes with one of these on. But my question to you is, in a normal time, you do have folks who, well, kids, who stay after school for some one-on-one help with students. And I'm wondering if that has been considered in the schedule at all, because they're out at 11:00. And I've also thought, I know we were talking about, you know, students who are fully remote, you know, obviously there are probably some who are taking into consideration people they live with, their health, so they may go remote for that reason. But they might say to themselves, well, yeah, I don't want to throw myself into a building with a lot of people, but I might be willing to meet one-on-one with my teacher if it's safe enough. Are there opportunities that might come about? Because I think you might have some students who say, well, I could meet with a teacher if it's after school or something like that. Just a thought, I don't know how that would be incorporated, but, um, even if it's, you know, virtual, I know there's probably ways to do it, but.
So those conversations have come up and they come up primarily around the CTE teachers.
Gotcha.
CTE is still an area that, um, has some things that have to be, you know, worked out with the number of hours for certain programming. So the CTE teachers have brought that up, that, you know, as we get more and more settled, you know, could we look at some of the times that where CTE kids could come in as we get into school? So yes, those are things that we have, you know, we have on the whiteboard, so to speak, where we, we park them for now until we get things underway. Uh, but again, those things have come up where, you know, we want to make sure that we have opportunities for kids, for teachers to engage, you know, with teachers. So, um, again, looking at, you know, what is, what is contractual, what is not, you know, I've always seen, you know, I've always experienced that teachers, you know, do what's best for kids and, and, you know, rise to the occasion where, you know, if a, if a teacher and a, and a student are having a conversation in class and the teacher says, hey, you know, we can continue this, uh, uh, you know, at 2:30, uh, that's something that would not be denied. Uh, and we had that kind of commerce, started those conversations today. Um, you know, but looking at more and more kids being able to come in, you know, we talk, we had those conversations from a number of our teachers that have specific, uh, subjects that, that, that may require at some point some in-person. But I think, you know, those are good questions. We will keep those, you know, in the queue, so to speak, but, you know, once, you know, once we get going, you know, maybe we can find pockets of, okay, this student, you know, these students can come in, you know, at this point in time. Uh, and teachers have been great with being open where, hey, I'll be here at this time, can I move this, think these things around? Uh, so I think, you know, and the, and the work that I've done with the teachers and people behind school in the last couple of months, um, they're, they're willing to, to do what it takes to, to do what's best for kids.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And, um, you know, we certainly changed things quite a bit in terms of the work you had been doing with our vote last week, and I just think this is remarkable and I wanted to give credit to you and the team for what you did here. Questions that I think my colleagues have asked have been terrific. I had concerns and wanted to make sure I had a clear understanding of how the students are going to be held accountable, attendance, clubs, guidance counselor access, uh, the flex, uh, um, opportunities here, terrific. So I wanted to thank you, because I knew it was going to be quite a burden on all of you, uh, to put this together and, and I'm really pleased. And I know things are going to have to be adjusted and there'll be things that, um, you know, may shift a bit moving forward, but I really do appreciate, uh, your efforts on this. I know a lot of thought went into it, so thank you. Any other questions at this time for the group, uh, Mr., Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's just a general one. I made sure I kept my questions to the topic of your, um, presentation. And I, I gave you fair warning, I've got all kinds of questions. I've got all kinds of questions about the details of, um, you know, the actual, uh, operation of the schools, the safety considerations, I mean, all of those. I don't know if you have anything to present on that tonight. I do want to ask those questions, um, but I, I wanted to hold off and I know other people probably have questions too, but sticking with the, the scheduling and the, the, you know, the curriculum, that was a huge piece. But then there's that whole other elephant in the, in the room about, you know.
Yep, no, those are.
How much, how much soap did we order? Seriously, down to things like that. Like is every classroom going to have soap dispensers and all things like that?
Yep. And I do have a, um, a kind of a global announcement to the city in terms of the work we've been doing at the buildings, the ventilation work and, and certainly at quality, that's been a, a pretty common question. And I do have a breakdown of all the PPE that we've ordered and things. I don't know, Dr. Vidal, if you want to.
And I'd like to maybe put that on the agenda for the next meeting. On, on September 1st, every single school is going to do a comprehensive training for all of their staff members. And so I think that it would be great if I could report out on what all the schools presented. And each school has their unique way of, of, uh, you know, dealing with their protocols. And I think I could do a nice little wrap-up, um, at, at our first September meeting, uh, to give you, and it will be before school starts, but just to give you an overview of, of what each, uh, of what each prin, school principal did in terms of their unique setting, because every school's a little bit different. And so each principal on September 1st will be doing a, a safety training. The 31st, uh, on the Monday will be from the nurses, and so we'll have that whole piece. And then on the 1st will be through the principals about, you know, how they're going to navigate each of these things, you know, one-way hallways and.
One-way hallways, one-way stairwells.
Different stairwells, all, all of those little things, they, they're doing comprehensive trainings. And so, you know, we'll be able to share that information with you. I think it might be best on the next school committee agenda.
Okay.
And we could maybe take that.
That's the 150-page document.
Yes.
I'm waiting.
It's still growing.
I'm sure it is, probably add 10 pages with my questions, but thank you. That's good to know. And I think that that's one of the things that people need to know, um, because one of the biggest concerns was they were wrestling with which program to choose for their student. And some of their questions were about the protocols on, you know, the social distancing, you know, would there be Plexiglas in front of specific areas? Would there be one-way hallways? Will, will the entrance and exit be different by doors? How would things be handled on the bus? Who's going to handle things on the bus? Um, you know, when will they be assigned to buses? Those, those are the frequently asked questions, so some of them.
Those are all, those are all important.
Okay.
So why don't we do that? I mean, I know it's on the agenda as well, the superintendent's report, school committee 2020, 2021 meeting schedule. Do we want to set up a meeting for next Tuesday night just on, on safety?
Yes.
And on these procedures, these operations? I mean, I think that's important, uh, and that'll allow Dr. Vidal, you and your team, the principals and everything to develop their plan. But, you know, today it was important, this was extremely important to get a sense of the high school hybrid plan, which I think we have a much better sense now. But I think safety is the next item and I think if we set up a meeting for Tuesday, I mean, we'll have other agenda items as well, but that would be a focal point of the meeting will be, uh, those safety precautions and the operations and how that'll work. So I would recommend doing that, um, and setting up a meeting at that time for next Tuesday, uh, September 1st. Is that right, September 1st, Tuesday?
Yeah, thanks. Yes, yes, because normally we would meet September 8th on a, on a regular schedule.
Yes, I think the proposal was the 8th and the, the 8th and the 22nd.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So, whatever the will of the committee is.
Wait, is that, is that a voting day?
Yes, that's voting day. So maybe we can wait until the end.
Yeah, we're going to have to wait on that.
Can we do it on the 8th?
Wednesday, through the chair.
Yeah, well, I don't.
Why don't we do that first week? I think that's important.
Do we, the second?
The second? Yeah, we, we can't mess with election day. So I can make, uh, uh, that's good for me, Wednesday, the 2nd at 7:00 PM right here?
Let's do that.
That would be fine.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and I don't want to tell. Yeah, I don't want to take, I don't want to tie Mr. Haas and Mr. Magno up, so thank you both, gentlemen. Very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's take one minute break, real quick, uh, mask break.
We have 25.
All right, let's, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We are in the middle of the superintendent's report. Dr. Vidal, I want to turn it back over to you. I know we have a couple of other items on, on your report, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are a couple of questions on the preschool for the reopening, so I just wanted to touch base on preschool and then we have some information on transportation and food services. So we run two different preschool programs in the city, the integrated preschool at the McCarthy School and the Title I preschool at the Welch. Uh, so each of those preschools will be, will be running half-day models, five days a week, uh, one of the days will be remote. So they'll have 12 students per class, so we can have social distancing, we've walked through all the classrooms. Uh, it'll be an AM and a PM model for the integrated preschool and the Title I preschool. And students will be, will receive an education four days a week, uh, in person and one day a week remotely. And so the annual tuition is based on the five-day-a-week half-day tuition, which is $2,875 for the year. Uh, so that's what we're looking at for our, our in-district tuition. Our Title I preschool is free. Our integrated preschool is free for our students who receive special education services and then we have the opportunity for students to, um, pay a tuition to be a model peer. And the model peer tuition rate is 2875 for the entire year for the half-days, five days a week. Uh, so if there's any questions about that, I just wanted to put that out there. Uh, in previous years, they were able to select two days, three days, four days or five days, but in order to do a cohort, we're limiting to the five-day model and they'll have that, that, uh, Wednesday as remote. Uh, if we do go all remote, we're still providing that education every day. And so we wanted to let parents know ahead of time that this is the model that we're looking at, this is the flat fee for the entire year and we will guarantee you, uh, a, a teacher the entire year, uh, each day from, I think they're looking at 8:40 to, uh, to 11:20 is the AM block and then there's an hour off. And I believe there's, uh, there's a two and a half hour in the afternoon, so that goes, um, I believe the, the PM hours are until 2:40. So I think it's, uh, it's, it's two and a half hours, uh, between 8:40 and 2:40. Each, each AM and PM has a two and a half hour block. Uh, but we'd be looking at setting one annual tuition rate instead of all the multiple rates. This is the same tuition rate as the five-day half-day that was approved by the committee last year. Uh, so that's, that's the tuition rate that we're looking at. So any questions on preschool before we move on? So I know we had quite, quite a number of questions on transportation. These, this is one large document that's on the website, uh, but it answers a lot of the questions. So in terms of frequently asked questions for the transportation, if you go onto our school website under departments, you can choose transportation, there's a lot of great information here. Uh, it talks about the seating capacity and the limitations, talks about bus fees and things like that. There's not a fee set. Uh, I do know that that needs to be set by the committee and I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, just sort of an overview of transportation. Uh, during last school year, approximately 4,000 students rode the bus. Uh, this year, the capacity that we're anticipating is about 1,700 students per day. Um, so what that would mean is that we could really accommodate 3,400 students, uh, because students would only be taking it two days a week. Uh, we sent out a transportation survey, we've had about 1,700 responses and about 1,400 requests. So right now, we're within the realm of what we can accomplish. We are encouraging families to carpool, we're encouraging families, uh, a number of families, you know, feel safer driving their kids or walking or, or, um, you know, finding alternative means of, of getting to school, given, uh, some of the safety concerns that people have. So we have a number of safety protocols, windows will be open, one to a seat, we have about one-third of the capacity, uh, so that's where we came up with that number 1,700. Uh, right now, we're anticipating that, uh, we can honor all of the requests that we have, uh, what we are looking for round trip only, uh, so we wouldn't be doing the one-way passes, so the students would be assigned a seat. Uh, right now, the proposed fee would be $100 and the way that we came up with that is, uh, if we had a $300 fee last year, 40% of that is $120 and then 170 days versus 180 days, uh, was about 113 and change, so we rounded it to about $100. Uh, so that was where that, that came up with, uh, we, we put this out to the committee because the committee would set the fee, um, and there, uh, the transportation department has said a family cap of 200 would be reasonable. Uh, a couple of other questions that had come up, uh, if there is a kindergarten sibling and you siblings can share a seat, could this kindergarten student ride in the morning with their sibling and then the parent pick up on the midday, since we won't have a midday run? Uh, and we will be able to accommodate that on a case-by-case basis. Uh, so we wouldn't be able to do kindergarten round trips because we wouldn't have that midday run for the AM and PM. Uh, but we would look at if there's a sibling being able to provide one-way transportation.
Just one thing to point out, the high school will have the afternoon run. The kids will be taken home at the end of the high school day and the half-day.
So we, because they would have their arrival and dismissal would be consistent, so we would be able to do that, um, consistently with their arrival and dismissal time. So we would be able to honor that for the high school as well as grades one through eight for arrival and dismissal, uh, where kindergarten and preschool have the, the half-days. In addition, uh, we had sent out the special education survey for special education transportation, that is door-to-door transportation specialized based on their IEP, so that is a separate transportation and those will all be honored. So I don't know if there's any discussion on this or if you wanted to talk about the fee, Ms.?
Um, I think I'll take the easy one first and make a motion to get it out of the way. Um, Ms. Connors is saying that she can only do round-trip, um, transportation, no one-way pass, so I'm going to make a motion that we only offer round-trip, um, bus passes for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Heard the motion, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Any comment? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. On Notice?
Yes.
Mr. On Notice?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Huckman?
Yes.
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 Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to be clear on that. That policy will sunset after the 2020, 2021 school year is over and we can revisit it as necessary.
Absolutely. Yep, that makes sense.
On the proposed fee, and Mr. Scanlon, we might, you might be better served with On the proposed fee, and Mr. Scanlon, we might, you might be better served with a microphone, some of these questions are gonna be directed to you, and people are listening. Thank you, so, through, through the mayor, to Mr. Scanlon, we, we had built into the proposed budget, the, the budget that we approved for an appropriation that we'll get back to in a couple of weeks, a different figure than this.
Yes, it is, our fees normally are around the range of three hundred and forty, so it would depend on how many would sign up, it is a variable. One of the things that could immediately offset the difference is that on the remote days, we'll be paying a sixty percent discounted rate. So, that forty percent savings could go toward making up the difference of the other two hundred dollars, but those are estimates in the budget. So, it would depend on, you know, what our actual costs are, and then how many take the bus, and then what the actual offset is, sorry, no more offsets, we're just gonna charge directly for revolving funds.
And I'll get back to that when we do have that budget meeting, but I will ask either you or Dr. Vidal, I'm not sure who, and it might be two different answers, because we have two different transportation companies. One is our own people at PBD Public Schools, and one is Healy Bus. It seems to me that with the high school going half-days, and elementary and middle school going full-days on the days that they're, that they're in, four days a week, that we have three tiers now, and not four tiers. And we have a contract that has four tiers of transportation. There's no more late buses, because there's no more athletics, there's no more clubs or activities after school at the Higgins or the high school. So, are we gonna see any savings either from Healy in regard to that, since we're not using the buses for as long of a duration as we contracted? And what are we doing with our own people?
Well, I'll take a look at it in the morning with the Transportation Director, but we're not changing the tiers, I mean, the, the capacity in the buses are fixed. So, we can't run more tiers and stay within the, the timeframe. So, our existing tier structure will be maintained, status quo.
Through the mayor, if I can, to Mr. Scanlon, it's my understanding that we have four tiers of transportation, or we did have, pre-COVID, we had four tiers.
Well, it's three, it's the elementary, the middle, and the high school.
Right, and then, we had late buses at the, at the high school and at the middle school.
Sorry, did you say late buses?
Late bus.
I don't consider that a tier, but yes, you are correct.
Okay, okay, and again, I don't need an answer tonight, Dr. Vidal, but there's obviously a change in some of what we're doing, and hopefully, there's other opportunities for people to fulfill their workday.
Yes, and I also think that one of the things that we budget for is, separate from the contract, is the additional buses for field trips and, and activities and sports. And so, that's paid on a case-by-case-per-diem basis, and so, that money is budgeted in there, and so, there could be potential savings if we don't have as many runs.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Vidal or for Mr. Scanlon, Mrs. Dunn?
Do you need a motion to implement that proposed fee, or is that something for, for a future meeting?
I think the committee would need to set the fee before we, we would move on here.
Yeah.
Hi, I will make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent regarding a proposed fee for transportation.
Second, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, you've heard the motion, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Roll call, on the motion, Mr. Hockman.
Yeah, and again, through you to Ms. Dunn, this is also gonna sunset after, I think it does anyway, I think we set the fee every year anyway, but, yeah.
No, it's good to clarify that, so that would just be for this year. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Anadis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and I know our, our families are anxiously awaiting this information, so we'll get this information out in the morning, and we'll be able to tighten up our, our transportation numbers, so thank you for that. Another topic that we had on the agenda for the superintendent's report is food services. So, we were excited to announce that the summer foods program was able to continue prior to the start of school. So, today, we met with Maureen, our, our Director of Food Services, and, and Mr. Hockman, and we talked about some grab-and-go opportunities that we'll have before school. So, we'll be pushing this information out, there'll be an all-call to families on Friday. On Monday, eight-thirty-one, on September third, September eighth, and September fourteenth, we'll be doing grab-and-go at the high school from ten-fifteen to twelve-fifteen, and at the Higgins and Welch from ten-forty-five to twelve-forty-five, that should say P.M., we won't be going past midnight, it's not a school committee meeting. We'll be serving, once school begins on the sixteenth, we'll be serving breakfast and lunch every day for students. The free and reduced-price application I have here, there is a link to this presentation, there's a link to the free and reduced lunch application. We also sent out an all-call encouraging all families to apply for free or reduced lunch, you have to reapply every year. And we do need to have a point-of-sale, which means that even, once school starts, we'll be offering food for, for kids who are remote at the grab-and-go basis, but we do need a point-of-sale, because it's considered a school day. So, the students would need to be able to provide their name or their I.D. number, and we'll be able to charge that as a free lunch, or charge their, my-school bucks for the free, the reduced price or the full-pay price. And so, I, I did have the meal pricing, this is consistent with what we had last year for breakfast, is a dollar thirty-five, and thirty cents for reduced, and the lunch price was three thirty-five and forty cents for reduced. At the middle and high school, there's a little bit more components, so it's a three-dollar-and-sixty-cent lunch and forty cents for reduced. So, questions on food, food services?
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, it's just one, and I know a lot of people have asked about, it will be probably addressed by all your principals, but the question is, will students eat in the cafeteria, or will they eat in classrooms? How will they get their lunch, just the whole process?
Yes, and that'll be a school-by-school basis, most of them will be grab-and-go opportunities. For example, the Higgins here, if, if we, on the way out, you could walk by the cafeteria, there's a hundred desks set up, six feet apart. So, they will be able to have, I believe, two cohorts, they have clusters, two clusters of students that they're looking at, to be able to have a dedicated space for their lunch, just because of the sheer size. At the elementary level, we'd be looking at either classrooms or outside opportunities for kids to eat, and they could go and do a grab-and-go. And the high schools doing their grab-and-go as, as Mr. Magno suggested, so, a little bit different at each school, but, but they'll be going over those with their faculty and, and with their students on day one.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point for the grab-and-gos before school starts, August thirty-one, September three, September eight, and September fourteen. Since it's an extension of the Summer Reach Program, there's no charge to any PBD Public School student that comes to the grab-and-go for any of those meals.
Great, thank you.
And at those grab-and-gos, there'll be multiple meals given out, so there'll be enough meals to, so for example, on August thirty-first, I think there's three days' worth of breakfast and lunch that'll carry the student or the family until September third. And then, on September third, there'll be enough meals given out until September eighth and so forth.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Hockman, yes, so that's, that, that will continue right through the first day of school, once the first day of school starts, we need to go through the point-of-sale system, but prior to that, we'll be, be continuing our grab-and-go, which has been very successful.
Any further questions or comments on food service? Okay, Dr. Vidal?
Okay, I know there was a question on alternative childcare, Dr. Lord has been working with some of our outside providers to identify some alternative childcare opportunities, so I'm gonna allow, Dr. Lord is going to address this, and then we'll come back. We do have, still on the agenda is the calendar and the school committee meetings, so, Dr. Lord?
Thanks, Dr. Vidal, we have a great team, meets about once a week, on alternative childcare, includes the nurse, various groups within the city, trying to find opportunities for students to have the remote, off-site learning when a non-school day is happening. Mostly for elementary schools, as you might suspect, Little Tanner's has got a group of PBD teacher children already ramped up for that. And the next group would be first, second, third, fourth, fifth graders, again, with PBD teachers in mind, so, PBD Tanner's is, Little Tanner's is gonna have kind of an annex, we don't know exactly how, how big that's gonna get, it depends on how many of our teachers need to have childcare, but that'll be a priority for our teachers. For kids-only is, now that the high school's gonna go hybrid, there's, they're back to the same problem they had two weeks ago, in that they need to have more space, some of the spaces they're looking at, help me out, is it Century?
Centennial.
Centennial Park, we're looking at some spaces at Centennial Park, I brainstormed the other day about the perhaps at George PBD Museum, and I know they have a couple of churches, they just locked up, I think, the West Church.
West Congregational.
West Congregational Church, they're working on a contract with them, and there's another church that.
Saint Thomas.
Saint Thomas for kids-only, anyway, the idea here is to get as much space as possible for these students that parents, families need to drop them off for on non-school days. Once we provide these opportunities, we'll, we'll illustrate that to everyone, and then it's up to those families to, to go out to the for-kids-only group, or the YMCA group, and do, and do the same thing. Everyone's in the same problem, if anyone has a, has a garage or something, they'd like to, we need, we need a place to put ten kids and a couple of adults during the school day when they're not in school. Anyway, that's their limiting factor, their price point is five points per, five dollars per hour, and it will vary. Some of, there's about eight or ten different ways kids need to get supervised, there are kids that are gonna be going to school that need supervision for two hours before school starts, and again, three hours after school is over, so that's one group for kids-only is happening. There's another group that's gonna be the full seven A.M. to six P.M. all day for for-kids-only, that's another group of kids that need to get supervised. And then, there's gonna be a problem on Wednesdays, because everybody needs to get supervised on Wednesdays, because there's no in-school settings on that day. So, there's a lot of logistics associated with that, I'm meeting again with them on Friday, we'll have some more information for you next Tuesday, that's where alternate childcare is at the present moment.
Great, thank you, Dr. Lord, we do have a question, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, not a question, but just a, a point of clarification, in addition to the, the childcare options that are listed on the screen, there are multiple other agencies throughout the city that, they may be listed as daycare or preschool, but the Department of Early Education and Care is loosening some of their guidelines to accept more school-age children. And some of those programs are offering remote service, remote learners to come into their buildings, so I would encourage our community to reach out, even if it says that, that your student's age is not covered in that building. EEC is making those concessions, so that these daycare facilities are able to help accommodate everyone during this time, so, reach out to the other agencies as well.
I did want to compliment one of the comments that were made earlier today about the curriculum, and how we're gonna be working with that with the teachers over the next couple of weeks. But you're hoping by the end of the day, on Friday, the eleventh of September, we'll have a public version of all curriculum maps, K-12, so that this group, the alternate group, can go on and see where kids are in their classrooms, the general idea of all the instruction that's happening in all the classrooms during the school day. So, they'll be able to complement what the teacher is providing for them remotely, all the, all the kids are gonna be picking up a Chromebook, which is gonna be great, the tablets will be for the K-12 students, more touchscreens and so forth. But anyway, it'll be a great opportunity for the kids to be able to interface in the non-school day with an adult who has a somewhat knowledge about what's going on through those curriculum maps that we hope to get on the website.
Great, thank you, Dr. Lord, go back to you, Dr. Vidal.
Great, thank you, Mayor Benton Court, so the next item was the calendar, and I know we've had a couple of different versions of the calendar, so, in the latest proposal that we have, there's a draft in your packet, we would be proposing and, and putting out to the committee for discussion to reinstate a workday on the September first, which is the Election Day. Previously, the committee had discussed and voted to not have students in the building that day, and so, it would have been a non-school day. Since it's a professional development day now, we would be recommending having that consistent next week, having four days of professional development with the teachers. We didn't think that it would be disruptive to the election process, but we did think that it would be helpful to our faculty to have that continuous professional development. So, we'd be proposing that that would be a workday for teachers, again, it's not a school day, and then the last day would change from the seventeenth of June to the sixteenth of June. We're also working on a version of the calendar where we would identify the cohorts for A and B, or Group A and Group B, and when they would attend school, and so, we would like to have that available for families as well, so that we would, they would be able to see. And we, we did it out between, for the grades one through eight, between September and, and January first, they would have the exact same number of school days, of in-person days. So, we're, we're working to make sure that that is equitable as well. So, and I don't know if there's any discussion on, on the calendar, I do believe the school committee votes, we would want to put the calendar on the website, just, just to give people that heads-up. So, this calendar would, would have the start, the first day for the, the employees that report paraprofessionals and teachers on the one-hundred-and-eighty days, they come in on August thirty-first, September first would be a workday, and then the first day of school would be September sixteenth, and we would have a hundred and seventy days of school, which, with no snow days, ends on June sixteenth. We've had some questions about what a snow day looks like, right now, we're not able to do a remote day on a snow day, but the commissioner may allow that, so, to, to be determined on that one. The sixteenth of June would be the last day of school, and we do still have snow days built into the calendar, as is required.
You know we're probably gonna have a blizzard, because that's just to add to.
Let's not talk snow right now.
Come on!
We do need, we do need a vote, though?
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the current iteration of the school calendar as presented by Dr. Vidal.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico, on the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, Doc, I, I think at the last meeting, we talked about what the hybrid model looked like with Monday holidays, and now that we've kind of identified them, or we will after we take this vote, are we gonna swap the, the Monday for Wednesday and, and, or how does that work, if you've worked through that yet?
So, yes, I believe there's a calendar, Dr. Lord has identified a, like, green days and orange days to identify for Group A and Group B, and that, that's identified on there, so that there's no two days in a row, so it's staggered each week, and, and so, it's really, it's identified nicely, and we'll be making sure that we provide everyone with plenty of information leading up to which, which day falls on, on which day. So, if there's a Monday holiday, the, the Wednesday remote day would not be remote, it would be, it would be an in-person day.
Right. If this gets voted on tonight, and we post it tomorrow morning, you'll see there's only four Wednesday remote days between now and Thanksgiving, that's it. Including the very first day, the kids come back, it's gonna be a fully remote day. But that, so, most of the days between now and Thanksgiving, the kids are gonna be in school.
Okay, and then, a couple of other questions on this while we have it, parent-teacher conferences, I see they're built into the schedule, do we know if those are gonna be virtual or, or in-person, or, again, has that even been worked out yet?
Yes, we're currently working on something with, with the teachers to identify maybe that the fourteenth and fifteenth, in lieu of Meet the Teacher Night, would be potentially an in-person or, or virtual, Meet the Teacher during the school day, so, or during the, the typical school day. It could also be an opportunity to pick up the Chromebooks that we're providing for students, and so, we're, we're looking at, at, at building that in, so that, you know, families would, would be able to come into the school, see the teacher, see the classroom, see the setup, and then have a quick meeting with the teacher, get to understand what the technology is that we're offering, and then, you know, rotate that through on the fourteenth and fifteenth. And that could potentially be in lieu of the back-to-school night, where the, where the parents would come in at night, and they would be able to, to come in and have a more intimate, more personal building relationship type, type meeting, and then they can tease through the, the technology pieces as well.
Okay, and then, lastly, I think for me, I know that we, we traditionally do, and we do in this calendar as well, have professional development days built in with some early releases. In light of the, the reduction of school days to a hundred and seventy, with ten upfront additional professional development days that are needed, and I'm glad we have them, which are gonna mostly focus on PPE and, and remote learning and, and things like that. You know, we're gonna set the calendar tonight, and I'm, I'm not really looking for an answer on, on those days, but perhaps we kinda revisit this as the school year goes along, and see what type of professional development we'll need at that point. But let's just keep, you know, in my mind, I'm keeping that open, and might bring this up again at some other point.
And I anticipate we may need more professional development, because we don't, we don't know what's coming, but, but we do know that as we reimagine what education looks like, you know, the more time we have with our teachers to, you know, to make sure that they're prepared, and make sure that they have the training necessary, then our kids are gonna benefit as well.
Good, thank you, good.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman, Mrs. Dunn?
Just a question, I know we, we control the calendar, but we always traditionally talk, speak with the union about any changes, and I'll be honest, there have been so many changes already. I just wonder, has this been brought up to them for their input at all?
Yes, it has, yes, yeah, it's, it's part of our ongoing conversations, we had a great meeting last night with them around developing a memorandum of, of agreement, I feel like we're very close to that, and that is something we'll be able to report out as soon as, as soon as we get there, but they are involved in that discussion as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, we have a roll call to adopt the FY two thousand twenty-two-one calendar, a roll call, please, Leanna?
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Anadis?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
And then, I know we touched on the PBD School Committee calendar coming up for our meetings, I would propose we have one September first, two thousand, excuse me, September second, two thousand twenty, and then, our regular schedule looks pretty, pretty good here. Do we wanna move to adopt that for this upcoming year, or?
Motion to accept.
I just had a question about September eighth, if there was any chance of moving that to the fifteenth, but if that's the will, then we'll go with it.
I'm open to that, Mrs. Dunn?
I'll, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm willing to make a, a motion to adopt this and to add that September second. And one thing that I would like to suggest is, if we do have our meeting on September second, at that time, we could have a special meeting, which would be strictly related to the reopening of the schools. So, it wouldn't be a full school committee.
On that, on September second?
On September second, where we could have, you know, the in-depth discussion about all of the procedures and everything that's going to go on in the schools prior to the opening, and then keep the September eighth as a regular school committee meeting, you know, just as scheduled with warrants and, and updates and things like that. But if we classify that September second as a special meeting, it's just that we're gonna do one topic, which seemed to be the, the thought when we talked about meeting next week, actually.
Yeah, and I, I think that merits its own meeting, I'd be comfortable with that, but certainly want everybody to weigh in on that, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, I think it's a terrific idea, Ms. Dunn, I'd be amenable to that as well. I'd also amenable to Mr. Amico's proposal of, of moving September eighth to September fifteenth, if we can make September eighth a budget meeting. We heard Mr. Magno talk tonight about some, I don't wanna say concerns, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but, you know, we still need to develop, make sure we have sufficient staff, we need to make sure we have positions filled, and now that we're seeing the plan, the hybrid plan develop at all levels, now we're setting transportation. now we're setting transportation, and we're going to see that develop, and food services. I think that we should have a budget meeting before school starts, and that would give us, and our administrators and leadership team, time to work with what we discuss and perhaps vote on at a budget meeting.
Any thoughts on that proposal, to set it up where September 2nd would be a discussion on safety and the operations? September 8th would be budget, September 15th would be regular school committee meeting, and then September 22nd would be regular school committee meeting. And then going forward, we would stay on that typical schedule. We'd do the 2nd and 4th Tuesday. On that, on that topic, Mrs. Kopernik?
Just a concern about the 8th as a budget. Is that something Mr. Magna would be prepared to do?
I don't think Mr. Magna would be there, right?
Did you say, I'm sorry, through the chair to Mr. Hockman?
I think that there are a variety of positions that are still, you brought up some attendance issues, and potentially, potential the need for attendance powers that aren't currently in the budget. I mean, I think that there, I think, again, I don't want to put words in Mr. Magna's mouth, particularly since he's no longer in the room, but I think he had similar concerns with some positions. And we really never did address a lot of that stuff. We pushed through an appropriation so that we can have a timely budget before the city council, and thankfully, they approved the budget that, or the appropriation that Dr. Vidal and we put before them. But we still need to, I think, really flesh out a lot of those things.
Right. And, I mean, I did say, I did hear him say he needed some time to figure out, you know, what he needed and how things were going to look. I'm not opposed to having the meeting, I just want to make sure he's ready for it. I don't, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think we, let's set the schedule, and then, I mean, we'll have to see where he's at, but I know he's got a lot of work ahead of him.
Yeah.
Mr. Amico, you want to weigh in?
Through the chair. Mr. Hockman makes a great point. Why don't we keep it as is and then maybe make the budget meeting on the 15th? That'll give us some more time to maybe collect some information from the state or from DESI or our funding sources. And it'll be right, that'll be the day before students return, so we can have a regular school committee meeting on the 8th, and that day could be just focused on, the 15th could be focused on budget.
So long as before the 15th, we can get ice cream from Treadwells and maybe go to Holden Hill. No, that's fine. Either or, whichever way it works.
It'll just give us more time.
All right, I propose, let's go with, let's keep the calendar as we have, it's 2nd and 4th Tuesdays of the month, so we stay September 8th and 22nd. Those would stay regular school committee meetings. September 2nd, next week, next Wednesday, at 7:00 PM, we will have a discussion, just with the sole item being safety in our schools, the operations, all of that, we can talk through and make sure we get a clear understanding. And then on September 15th, we will have a budget meeting that evening, just to review where we stand. Mr. Olympia?
Through the chair, not to complicate things a little bit, but my only thing is if we're going to bring back, let's say, potentially some positions, I mean, is it, should we have it maybe a few days after the 8th, just to give some of these people that are affected, I mean, it's the day before school starts, and oh, by the way, you need to report, I'm just throwing that out there.
I agree with Mr. Olympia. I had the same concern, actually. You know, you need a little turnover time.
That's why I suggested the.
Through the chair, I think that's a better idea.
It could impact two people, it could impact 12.
So can we go back to the 8th as the budget?
Yeah, that's a good point. All right.
All right, sorry.
So I'm going to make a motion to adopt the PBD School Committee regular meeting dates with the addition of the 2nd for, Bev, what'd you call it, school?
Special meeting.
Special meeting for?
COVID pandemic, special meeting.
Special meeting for school reentry on the 2nd, a budget meeting on September 8th, a regular school committee meeting on September 15th, and the balance of the dates as stated in the proposal.
Motion made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Anotis. All in favor? All in favor?
Ted, I got one issue.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, on transportation. Something we did in the dress were parking passes at the high school. Are we just going to prorate those a third like we did bus passes? Is that reasonable?
Sounds reasonable.
Right, students are only going to go?
170 days, where they would go, where they would go halftime?
Yeah, well, two days a week.
Forty percent.
So, 40% is that?
We'd have to adopt it, so the fee before was?
Hundred.
Was a hundred dollars, so 40%?
Forty dollars?
Forty dollars.
Is that?
Is that a matter of the committee?
So I'll make a motion to set the parking fee at the high school for the 2020, 2021 school year at 40 dollars.
Motion made by Mr. Hockman. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
For discussion, Mr. Amico seconds it. Mr. Amico, then Mr. Anotis.
Circumstances, maybe, Mrs. Scanlon, could you give us a number on what 40% of what we're collecting for the year would be on parking at the high school compared to what it was last year? I think last year was 40,000, so what's?
Oh, God, no.
So is it 40%? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, 40% would be 16,000, if it was 40.
It wasn't that much.
It wasn't that much. I think it was like 36 or so.
And I guess my point is, I think it's a lot more work. I would be fine with eliminating the parking fee this year. Because then last year, we also had some, we had to send refunds out, and if we do go hybrid and then go into a remote setting, it's going to cause an accounting mishap and.
My motion is so amended to reflect Mr. Amico's comments.
Well, the assumption that we had, that it hadn't even cleared with Josh yet, is that we're not going to be looking at refunds. We're just going to be taking the fee, and then that's just going to cover, because it's a significant discount over the standard fee. So if the schedule changes, I can't see any way to calculate how much, you know, to refund. We'll do a better job. The next time we do something for the first time, we'll be better prepared. So we can get the money back out, but I just wouldn't recommend it. Hundred dollars is a bargain.
Yeah, I'm happy to eliminate the fee under the circumstances. We can address that at that September 8th budget meeting, but I'm going to amend my motion to eliminate the parking fee at the high school for this upcoming school year.
Thank you.
Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Anotis. On the motion, Bev, Mrs. Dunn, sorry.
Thank you. I'm glad, because I was going to vote against any parking fee for numerous reasons. One is people, it's a privilege to drive to the high school anyway, but under these conditions, for some people, that's going to be a piece of their social distancing. It's, it's just, I think, not the right time to do that, and I'm glad we're not going to impose it. It also, I'm just going to give you a heads up, when you're looking into transportation overall, that the fact that many people will be driving their children to school for social distancing purposes, I think we also need to be very cognizant of the traffic patterns at this school, because we could have a huge change in how people arrive at our buildings. And, Dr. Vidal, just so you know, that we have, we have a requirement that any traffic changes. Each school should have a safety committee in place, and it should include a representative from the police department when a decision is ready to be made, so that the police can have some oversight on that, because it has really helped on a lot of different instances. I think you may end up facing something like that with an overwhelming number of people dropping children off. So there's another frequently asked question heading your way, so just to give.
Thank you. We have addressed some of that, and, you know, we have met with Chief Griffin, and he is going to assign officers to every school building for the first three weeks. We are anticipating more people driving. However, we are anticipating 50% of the enrollment. So, you know, we're hoping that, you know, we'll still have all of the safety officers in place, you know, to help with that, but we do anticipate the increase in number of drop-offs will maybe be offset by the number of people who are actually attending on a daily basis.
That's a good point. Thank you.
And with that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Mrs. Scanlon, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I wanted to go to public participation now, following the superintendent's report. So do we have anybody that's raised their hand? And, Mr. Dr. Vidal, if you could welcome them in?
Okay, I'm going to bring in Kristen M. Kristen, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. Okay, I'm going to try to bring in Sarah Coleman. Sarah, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello?
Hi, Sarah, you're on.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Coleman. I'm a teacher at the high school. Good evening, and thank you for your time, members of the distinguished school committee. The following letter was submitted by the high school science department to the mayor on August 13. It was also submitted to all members of the school committee as of today, August 25. We would like this information to be shared with the wider school community. Dear school committee, teachers and students alike are yearning to return to school, and life is normal. However, under the current conditions, the proposed plan is unsafe for our students and educators. There is no safe way to open PBD school buildings at the beginning of the academic school year based on current scientific evidence. We hope that the following concerns will be taken under advisement. Recent studies show that young children actually carry a significantly higher viral load than adults do. Though more research is necessary to determine the consequences of this, based on similar viruses, it is likely that children, though less severely affected, are strong vectors for the transmission of this disease and pose a great risk to teachers and staff. With virus infection novel and the fact that research, quality science takes time, it is still unclear what the long-term effects of the infection may be. Recent studies suggest that anywhere from 15 to 80% of COVID-19 infections result in long-term side effects, including joint pain, vertigo, lung scars, heart abnormalities, hypertension, brain fog, insomnia, chest pain, skin rashes, and long-term fatigue. Students act as efficient vectors which possess a risk to community stakeholders. When the students leave the school building, they go home or to work, where they interact with members of their families and the PBD community who are at high risk. The same process applies to teachers and their families. The reentry survey that was administered to teachers was worded in a way that solicited a specific answer, which drastically skewed the data. For instance, when asked if teachers would return under a hybrid model, the phrase "if all physical distance guidelines and safety precautions are met" was used. At this time, all safety precautions are not being considered, and therefore, the school committee's statement that 80% of teachers support going back hybrid is invalid. Intermingling of students, faculty, and staff is unavoidable at the high school level. Even under the current proposed hybrid schedule, infected student would be in closed quarters with at least three teachers and 45 students a day. If they attended two days of school while contagious, that's an additional three teachers and 45 students. Under the CDC quarantine guidelines, all six teachers and 90 students would have to quarantine. Those numbers are assuming only one infected student. If even two infected students come to school, it could result in the quarantine of up to 12 teachers, which would drastically affect the ability of the school to function. HVAC problems have consistently been a concern at many of our older school buildings, including the high school, where we have struggled for years to achieve effective heating, cooling, and ventilation in our classrooms and lab spaces. Additionally, schools do not have the same criteria as healthcare facilities for ventilation design to mitigate transmission of infectious diseases. We also urge you to consider the following case studies of schools that opened up without adequate plans during the pandemic, Israel, Louisiana, and Indiana. Nobody should have to die because it was preferable or more convenient to send students back to school. Are we willing to risk the lives of educators? Are we willing to risk losing even one student? We are not. Respectfully, the 16 members, all members of the PBD High Science Department, and I want to make sure it's clear that we've cited resources in the email that was sent, the American Association for Advancement of Science, the Journal of Clinical Infectious Diseases, and CDC protocols for responding to the COVID-19 scenarios in school. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to take that as a late communication, that letter that was mentioned.
Second.
Okay. Anybody not in favor of that? Okay. That's been received.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, we're going to bring in Nikki. Okay, Nikki, please unmute yourself, state your name and your address for the record. And next, we're going to bring in John Cordelitis. John, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is John Cordelitis, Longview Way, PBD. It's been a long ordeal trying to get to the best path, because I don't think anything here is going to be perfect, that anyone's thought of or any ideas that we've come up with. I know it's difficult for teachers who believe their health is at risk. I've always thought of an education as being essential, and now we can go into different stores, and we can even eat in restaurants six feet apart. We're told that's supposed to be safe, six feet apart without a mask. Again, I'm not saying that I know everything about it, but I would assume that wearing a mask in a classroom is safer than being in a restaurant six feet apart without a mask. Nothing will ever bring the risk to zero, but we need to decide just how much education is worth in interaction with each kid's peers and the social interaction. Again, I think we've already decided that we do want to do a hybrid schedule. On that hybrid schedule, I think when I had said I was for it, and many of us who aren't really getting what we thought we were going to get in a two-day schedule, this two-day, half-day schedule for the hybrid, if you're in-person, equates to six hours of in-school and four hours of remote learning. So basically, kids are in school 10 hours a week, if you've chosen the hybrid. In the remote learning, it equals to over 20 hours a week. I'm not sure exactly how that is fair. Again, I'm not sure, I didn't fully understand the reasoning behind not having a full day. And I can't see with the size of the classes only going two days a week, why even with the expanded number of classes and electives, that we can't have a full seven-day schedule two days a week, or even one full day and one half-day. As I said, I was expecting two full days. I'm not sure what the committee was thinking when they voted for the hybrid schedule. I think we were looking at something more in line with what the middle school was doing. Again, this may be the only option and the best option. I'm sure Mr. Magno and Haas came up with what they thought was best. But being a parent, where each, where my daughter in high school will only see each teacher once a day for 45, I'm sorry, once a week for 45 minutes in-person, and once a week, 30 minutes at home, if I'm understanding the schedule correctly, I think is insufficient. Again, I can't say that I know I have all the answers, but I think this needs a little bit more work. And as far as grading, I'm not sure how you can equate an in-person exam for whatever class to a remote learning exam with all the options available to that student that's at home and think that 85 in-school. at home, and think that an eighty-five in-school is equal to an eighty-five out of school. And I don't have the answer to that either, but I think that needs to be thought of. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Seeing no more hands raised?
We do not have any written communications today, so we will go now to committee, subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee, any update, Mr. Hockman?
Uh, no.
Okay. Finance Subcommittee, Mrs. Copener?
Nothing to report.
School Safety, Mr. Olympia?
Nothing new to report.
Athletics and Wellness, Mr. Hockman?
Uh, only that the, I think there was a vote by the MIAA to adjust fall sports, and then there was a further vote by our conference, I think, to adjust that even further. I'm sure information will be put on the school department website with regard to both of those votes, so that the general public will be able to see it. Yep?
Thank you. Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn, I know we have some items.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Quality and Standards Subcommittee met this evening prior to this meeting, and our original thought would be to address some of the pandemic policies that we had put on a hold at our last meeting, and hope to present to you tonight policies that were presented for first reading last week. And what I need to let you know is, I am very appreciative for Dr. Vidala. The Director of Public Health, Sharon Cameron, reviewed our policy on face coverings. We brought that to you, thinking that was the easiest one. That's why it was separated, it was ready to go. She raised some very, very specific, very significant thoughts on addressing deficiencies in that policy, and we talked about it tonight, and we've decided we need to bring that forward with much more input and advice into that one policy. The other policies, we're going to have Sharon Cameron look at those specifically before we even bring them forward. So we're de- definitely going to be working very diligently on this, but the, it, it just pointed out so many things that we need to address in our policies that we, we decided to hold back on them. And I'm actually very glad that, that she contacted Dr. Vidala and brought it to our attention, because they're really very important. And it points out how complicated opening the schools really is, how important safety is, and how, how many things need to be addressed to do it properly. So that's what we're going to do to, at the next meeting and the meeting after that. We should have something prepared for you for the next meeting, and we'll proceed that way. But very happy, and we, we're going to have her review those policies before we bring them to you, just to make sure that we, they're things we, we never thought of. Very, very amazing comments, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, just on the quality and standard subject matter, I do want to point out that I did talk to Ms. Cameron earlier today, and she sent out an email. And I do want to, I know that we're looking at the map that's going to come out tomorrow from the governor, and we were yellow last week. I'm not sure what we're going to be tomorrow, but I will say that the percentage of, of cases in PBD continues to decline, and it has declined for three weeks in a row. So just a matter of fact.
Actually, on that, if I could ask a question, and, Mr. Mayor, if you can find out for us. This was brought to me by someone else. A concern is that PBD is yellow, but that Salem and Lynn are red because of the number of rising cases. When cases are looked at in PBD, and I know we get a number for the full city, is it looked at ward by ward? The question is, are numbers rising in wards that are located next to Salem and Lynn?
Good question. I, I'd have to ask our, our health department that, that specific question. It'd be interesting to know.
Yeah, it, it was an interesting question, and it's, and it is a real thought. So if you, if you could find out for us-
Yep, I'd be curious as well.
-I could task you with that one.
Okay. Parent and Student Advisory Boards, Mrs. Dunn, anything to report?
No, but I'm going to tell everybody that we're going to proceed. Hopefully, we'll have parent advisory board members and student advisory board members, and we will try to get back to normal with them. And if we have to have Zoom meetings, that's okay, but we're going to put those through and have some meetings scheduled and get some speakers in, and do everything we used to do, but we may have to do it remotely, and it'll be okay.
Sounds good. Thank you. Building and Grounds, Mr. Amico?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Special Education, Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympia?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. City Council and Legislative Delegation, Mr. Ar notice?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. All right, so we have our schedule here for the upcoming weeks. Good meeting today, and move to adjourn. Oh, before we adjourn, Mrs. Copener?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of negotiations and with the intent to not return to open session.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Copener. All in favor? I'm sorry, on that, Mr. Hockman?
Do we have an agreement to ratify tonight, or is that?
No.
No. Okay. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Copener, seconded by Mr. Hockman. All in favor? All right, that'll conclude the meeting. Thank you, everyone.